The open session before closed session to receive public comment. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bates.
President.
Councilmember Jimenez.
President.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez. Vice Mayor Martinez. He's absent for roll call. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
And Mayor Butt.
Here. Do you have any public speakers?
We do not.
Wow.
Let me read the items into the record.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
During closed session, a conference council, sorry, will discuss the following items. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation sprawl death at all versus city of Richmond, the Giddyville Ranch era of California at all versus the United States of America at all, North Coast Rivers Alliance at all, Point Melody Alliance at all versus city of Richmond, Richmond Cats at all versus city of Richmond at all. Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. There are three cases. Under public employee performance evaluation, title is city attorney and also community police review commission investigative officer. And one, two, two more items, sorry. Conference with real property negotiator. The property is Terminal One Agency Negotiators, Shasa Curl and Lina Velasco. Negotiating parties Terminal One Development LLC under negotiation are the price and terms of payment. The last item is public employee appointment, title city manager. And we still do not have any public speakers.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned to closed session. Okay, um, welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Richmond City Council. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bates.
President.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Same thing.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
And Mayor Butt.
Here. Would you play the instructional video, please?
Due to COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted via Zoom pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Urgency Measure Assembly Bill 361, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act. The mayor will call upon council members, staff, and other guest speakers by name. Please speak clearly and state your name before giving comments or remarks. Council members, staff, and guest speakers participating via Zoom with their cameras enabled are reminded that their activities are visible to viewers. Community members participating via Zoom wishing to speak should use the raised hand feature or dial star nine if participating via phone, and the mayor or city clerk will call upon them at the appropriate time. Community members will have up to two minutes to speak, three minutes for public hearings. After the speaker's time expires, staff will lower their hand and mute their mic. Community members participating via phone will be called upon to speak by the last four digits of their phone number. Public input and participation are of the utmost importance to the City of Richmond City Council. Therefore, it is important for public speakers to be ready to address the council when called upon. Public speakers are requested to state their names and city of residence, but providing such information is voluntary. Written public comments received before and during the meeting in accordance with the COVID-19 Public Comment Guidelines printed on the meeting agenda will be entered into the record and published at the clerk's office webpage. If authors of written correspondence would also like to speak on the item, they should raise their hand when prompted by the mayor, and the city clerk will call upon them at the appropriate time. A roll call vote will be taken for all action items. The meeting can be seen on KCRT's TV channel and is being streamed on Zoom, YouTube, and kcrt.com. Thank you for participating in a meeting of the City of Richmond City Council.
Debido a COVID-19, esta reunión se llevará a cabo a través de Zoom en conformidad con las provisiones de la medida de urgencia del gobernador de la Ley de la Asamblea 361, que suspende ciertos requisitos de la Ley Brown. El alcalde llamará a los concejales, a los empleados de la ciudad y a otros invitados a hablar por nombre. Por favor, hable claramente y diga su nombre antes de dar su comentario. Se recuerda a los concejales, empleados de la ciudad y otros invitados participando a través de Zoom, con sus cámaras encendidas, que sus actividades son visibles al público. Miembros de la comunidad participando a través de Zoom que deseen hablar deberían de usar la función levantar la mano. En inglés, raise hand, o marcar estrella nueve si están participando por teléfono. El alcalde y la secretaria municipal llamarán a los oradores en el momento apropiado. Miembros de la comunidad tendrán hasta dos minutos para hablar y tres minutos para temas de audiencias públicas. Después de que se expire el tiempo de orador, se le bajará la mano y el micrófono será silenciado. Miembros de la comunidad participando por teléfono serán llamados para su turno usando los últimos cuatro dígitos de su número de teléfono. Los comentarios y la participación del público son de suma importancia para el consejo municipal. Por lo tanto, es importante que los oradores públicos estén listos para dar sus comentarios al consejo municipal cuando sean llamados. Se pide que los oradores públicos indiquen sus nombres y ciudad de residencia, pero proveer dicha información es voluntario. Comentarios escritos recibidos antes y durante la reunión, de acuerdo con las reglas designadas para comentario público durante el COVID-19, imprimidos en la agenda de la reunión, serán ingresados en el registro y se publicarán en la página web de la Secretaria Municipal. Si los autores de la correspondencia escrita también desean hablar sobre el tema, deberían levantar la mano cuando sea pedido por el alcalde, y la secretaria municipal los llamará en el momento apropiado. Se realizará una votación nominal para todos los puntos de acción. La reunión se podrá ver en el canal de televisión de KCRT y también se transmitirá en Zoom, YouTube, y kcrt.com. Gracias por participar en una reunión de consejo municipal de la ciudad de Richmond.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a statement of conflict of interest. Is there any? I don't see any. Next item is agenda review. Anybody have any changes they want to make to the agenda?
Um, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to move O2 to after public comment, if that's okay?
Oh, wait a minute. O2 to what?
After public comment.
Okay, any others? Um, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, I have a correction to item O1. And the correction starts on the second, um, second line, where it says approved a contract amendment number two with SCI Consulting Group modified potential vacant instead of parcel tax, it should be property tax service plan to include phase three tasks.
That's a big change. Okay, any others? Um, several people have asked me to move the State of the City up. It's the last thing on the agenda. And, um, you know, we may not get to it. So I would like to move it up after open forum. We can, we can do that, and then we'll take, um, well, you know, um, uh, the staff has said that O1 is really time sensitive and that we are, you know, we absolutely have to do it tonight. Um, is that right? Um, Shasha or?
Yes, please.
How long do you think it'll take?
Um, the consultant can, can abbreviate the presentation to 20 minutes. If the council is interested in the, in the item, we would have to come back quickly on March 1st. Thank you for your consideration.
So, um, Councilor Willis, would, would, would you be willing, well, the Urban Tilt presentation is after O1 anyway. I mean, is it really important to move that, move that up?
I did that arbitrarily just because I know it's community members that will be involved too. So I'm a, if I may make this suggestion, do O1, O2, then the State of the City, because I think that's going to take up the most time.
Well, you know, traditionally, State of the City has always been the first thing on the agenda. So I don't know how it got, I don't know how it got in last place.
I'll leave it up to you.
Some of you think I set the agenda, but obviously I don't.
Mayor Butt, we're, we're happy to, to go at the end. We just respectfully request that the city council, if need be, consider extending the meeting beyond 11 o'clock if need be, but hopefully we won't need to do that.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll just leave State of the City where it is. We don't get to it, we don't get to. Um, so we'll move up, uh, we'll move up O2 and, and we'll just take it that way.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so next item will be a report from the city attorney.
You're muted, Dave.
Okay, um, thank you. From the closed session agenda, uh, item C3, we had three matters there that relate to the litigation concerning Point Melody. We did not discuss any of that. That item is discussed Thursday night. We also had a litigation matter, which is the Cats versus city of Richmond. We gave a status report on, um, settling that, and there was no reportable action taken. The C2 is the three cases. Uh, those three cases are again related to Point Melody and were not discussed. Item 3C was, uh, public employee performance. The item was the city attorney and the police review commission. We did not discuss that either. That was pulled. The, um, uh, conference with real property negotiator concerning Terminal One. We had a discussion of that. There was a vote by the council to, um, ask Terminal One to provide their pro forma in connection with our property negotiations. Then, um, on C5, that was the public employee appointment concerning the position of city manager. The council had a discussion of, uh, making an appointment and a direction was given to the city attorney to, um, uh, determine potential terms of a, of an agreement. So, um, the city attorney is negotiating, uh, deal terms with a candidate. And that's, that's summary of the action taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a report from the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor Butt, members of the city council, enrichment committee members. The food bank of Contra Costa and Solano has returned to the Richmond Civic Center with their drive-through distribution. Each client will be able to pick up a box of non-perishable foods and fresh produce from, from within the safety of their car. These supplemental boxes include a balanced variety of protein, vegetables, fruits, and milk. The next distribution date is on Thursday, February 24th, from 12 noon to 1:00 PM at Barrett Avenue and 25th. For more information, please see the city's website or call 855-309-3663. That's 855-309-Food. Also, um, the city sewer lateral program is available. The city of Richmond's Water Resource Recovery Division administers the Sewer Lateral Grant Program. The program reimburses eligible homeowners in the Richmond Municipal Sewer District for some of the costs associated with replacing their sewer lateral. The program is open and accepting applications for fiscal year 2122. For sewer lateral work completed between July 1, 2021, and July, excuse me, and June 30th, 2022. For more information about the sewer lateral program, please call 510-620-6594. Again, 510-620-6594. Thank you.
And the next item is a report from the police chief.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Louis Torona, the acting chief of police. Since the last time we reported, good news is total violent and property crimes reduced by 16%. We did see a slight increase in violent crimes, specifically robberies increased by a total of one from 25 to 26. And fortunately, we had a major decrease in vehicle burglaries by 39%, a decrease from 46 to 28. So a total property crime reduction of 21% from 306 incidents to 243. And again, a total of property and violent crime reduction by 16%, 354 to 296 incidents. This past few weeks has been very busy. The patrol officers recovered in the last 30 days 32 illegal firearms possessed and safely recovered those firearms. I know this is a topic of concern to many people in the city, um, specific to vehicles that are parked with expired registration. I want to start adding that information to these reports. Year-to-date, 97 vehicles were towed throughout the city of Richmond for registration expired over six months. In comparison, in 2021, uh, there were 1,047 vehicles impounded for expired registration. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. If, uh, if any of the public wishes to comment on the city manager or police chief's report, you can do it during an open forum. So the next item is open forum for public comment.
Hey, tonight's open forum is an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. May also, as the mayor said, use this time to comment on reports from city manager and the interim police chief. If you wish to speak on an item that is listed on the agenda, please wait for the item to be called for discussion. We ask that you keep your comments respectful, respectful during this live recording. Thank you. And it looks like we have one speaker. Maybe two.
We have Marisol Cantu and David Hanks. Marisol Cantu, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Marisol Cantu, and I'm calling, uh, in support of the United Steelworkers Union, um, who local five, who are Richmond Chevron Refinery workers and are still without a contract on the 22nd day of the month. That contract expired on January 31st. Workers are still asking for health and safety precautions, and I am very happy that the resolution was passed, and I think city council member Claudia Jimenez and Eduardo Martinez for that. I do think that it is time, um, to pressure Chevron more to make sure that not only the health and safety of our workers is insured, but also for the overall community. Our workers know the best, um, safety protocols and are only asking, um, to keep our community safe. And so I, I hope that there is, uh, an agreement soon. If not, USW is holding weekly rallies on Thursdays at Chevron to demand a fair and equitable contract. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Hanks. David, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start. David Hanks?
Yeah, thank you. My name is David Hanks. I'm a private professional fiduciary. I'm representing the estate of a decedent, uh, that has, has a property in Richmond. She had to leave the property due to, uh, dementia as well as contracting COVID and ultimately died of COVID. I am in the process of settling her estate, and I have a property in Richmond that is adversely affected by the current eviction moratorium. On March 23rd of 21, the city council enacted the, an urgency ordinance, um, barring certain evictions based on, uh, one of the, you have another, uh, ordinance that's been in effect for a while, which is an owner, a just cause eviction ordinance that allows owner move-in to these properties. The problem I'm having is marketing this property because, uh, essentially the only option for an owner to buy that property and move into it, um, the, the lease is currently on a month-to-month, so the, the tenant has, you know, the lead, one-year lease has expired. The owners that have expressed interest in buying the property, um, have basically run to the hills because the only option is Yellis Act, which is a very onerous way of up to a year, uh, of having to wait to, um, occupy the property due to the notice requirements under the Yellis Act. It would seem with the decline of the COVID problems, now maybe not all of the moratorium should be rescinded. I, I assume there was probably a, a rent, uh, rent eviction moratorium as well, but at least the owner move-in moratorium should be restored, uh, should be, um, eliminated and go back to the normal Richmond, Richmond Fair Act, just cause eviction and homeowner protection ordinance. We're looking at probably $100,000 price reduction on this property for this woman's estate, just to get it sold, and the only offer we have is the tenant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Naomi Williams. Naomi Williams, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening. My name is Naomi Williams, and I live on the South Side. And I want to thank, uh, Chief Toronto for the good work that he's done for getting these illegal weapons off the street and to keep up the good work as long as he's in that role. And for Chief, I thought I heard you guys say that you had, um, a settlement with the chief, the city manager, and I'm just hoping that is Shasha. Okay, bye-bye.
Thank you. And the last speaker will be councilmember Bates.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. A few day, uh, weeks ago, I think, we put in, uh, and made a motion, uh, that was unanimously approved to file a legal action against Caltrans because they have not, uh, lived up to their promise of cleaning up a part of the freeway that they oversee. I don't know the status of that action, but I do, and I did recognize today on the Knox Freeway, Caltrans was quite busy cleaning up much of the, um, uh, freeway from at least Canal Boulevard going toward the Marina Bay area. I suggest that we at least communicate with them and express our appreciation for their diligence of cleaning up the, uh, city in Richmond, but also take some photographs of other areas that they have neglected. And maybe, uh, a kindness and a few complimentary words might get better results than filing a lawsuit. So it's just another option that I think we should utilize and encourage in Caltrans to continue to be diligent in cleaning up the freeway on both I-80 and the Knox Freeway, because it's not a pretty sight. There's still a number of homeless individuals that are, uh, on both of those, um, areas, I think. So that's just a suggestion to the staff, and maybe we hopefully can get some positive response. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more public speakers.
Okay, so I, I think we're gonna go to item O2 next. Would you read that, Madam Clerk?
Item O2 is to receive a presentation from Urban Tilt related to its growth in the areas of urban agriculture, youth employment, community cleanup efforts, and activities along the Richmond Greenway.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the Urban Tilt presentation. Many of you already know of the great ongoing work being led by Doria Robinson and Urban Tilt in Richmond and West County, particularly in North Richmond. As city staff have continued and are expanding partnerships with Urban Tilt, especially in the areas of blight abatement and beautification, um, we felt it was an important opportunity for the city council and the community to get an update on their growth and upcoming projects. In advance, I would like to thank the Urban Tilt team, and in particular, their executive director, Doria Robinson, for providing healthy food and local jobs for our community, especially ongoing through this COVID-19 pandemic. Doria Robinson, Urban Tilt Executive Director, will be leading the presentation. Next slide, please. And KCRT, can you please confirm that Doria has been, so moved up as a panelist? Great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this time to share our work. I know many people in Richmond know a little bit about Urban Tilt, but I don't think that many people know everything that we do. So I'm taking this opportunity to kind of share how we've grown over the last 17 years. So our mission is to inspire, hire, and train local residents to cultivate agriculture, feed our community, and restore relationships to land. Build a sustainable food system with an adjust and healthier community. We were established in 2005, so now we're over 17 years old. We're primarily run 90% by Richmond and San Pablo residents, mostly young people. And we're really proud of the work that we're doing. Next slide, please. So after 17 years, um, serving the greater Richmond community, currently, Urban Tilt creates jobs for over 52 people year-round. We also employ an additional 30 to 40 young people every summer and have done so for over 15 years now. Next slide, please. Urban Tilt is also the fiscal sponsor, sponsor for several inspiring and catalytic organizations, some of which you know, such as Rich City Rides, the Richmond Our Power Coalition, Cooperation Richmond, Moving Forward, Richmond Grows Seed Lending Library, Richmond Tool Lending Library, and It Takes a Village. Urban Tilt continues to work in our schools. We have a long, um, relationship with the West Contra Costa Unified School District, including a class that we've taught at Richmond High School, Urban Agriculture and American Food Systems. I think they recently changed the name to, uh, Farm to Table. This class qualifies for college science credits. We serve over 80 students for a full year. It's been going for 13 years, and the class was so successful that the district actually asked us to add an additional, uh, class sessions. Now we teach two classes, um, at Richmond High School. They grow in their garden, in their, uh, orchard, and they also offer a weekly or bi-weekly, uh, free farm stand for students and, and teachers and parents, where all the food that they grow goes out to the local community. Um, and they also host kids from the local elementary school, where the kids in the class will actually teach sessions for the local elementary kids. You see that picture there, where they're coming to the Richmond High Garden and learning from their older peers. At Verdi Elementary School, we've also been there for over 15 years, supporting the fabulous Ms. Bienvenida Mesa, who's been there for over 20 years, operating a full-service garden program that sees over 17 classes a week. Now, due to COVID and so much education happening inside the classroom, they're using the garden as an outdoor classroom to get the kids a little bit of time outdoors each day. they're using the garden as an outdoor classroom to get the kids a little bit of time outdoors each day. So we now see all four hundred students every week in the garden doing all kinds of garden nutrition and science activities to support their academic learning. Next slide, please. I think one of the things that really grew out of COVID was the expansion of our urban agriculture programs. Before COVID, we had a very small CSA. It was about eighty to a hundred, um, members in our CSA's community supported food box program. After COVID, today, we serve over four hundred families every week, a bag of ten to fifteen pounds of fresh, locally grown, organically grown produce. Two hundred of these families get the box for free. Of the two hundred free box members, many of the families live in public housing. So we serve Crescent Park, the Barretts, Eastern Village. We also serve the Senior Center in North Richmond, the Senior Living, um, apartments there, and a number of other locations where very low-income handicapped and elders live. Um, Urban Tilt started serving Eastern Village during the pandemic as a part of their, a part of a partnership that we had with Richmond Housing Authority. Next slide, please. For over sixteen years, Urban Tilt has dedicated staff time and thousands, honestly, thousands of hours of volunteer service to support the vision, um, of the Richmond Greenway. I think that that's where our work began, at the Sixth Street Gardens, a place called Berryland, and we continue to do that work today. We offer a number of inventive community events and activities, including the MLK National Day of Service that we put on with the Friends of the Richmond Greenway, the annual fruit tree giveaway. It's coming up in March. We're giving away four hundred and fifty fruit trees in three locations across the city, including two on the Richmond Greenway. Unity Park Roller Disco. We just had our first Books and Breakfast event at Unity Plaza where we gave over, gave away over a hundred books bought from the multicultural bookstore and had a puppet show and readings to encourage our kids to love reading and to get outside. Um, we do summertime movies, Halloween Land Event, and a gratitude walk for Thanksgiving along the Richmond Greenway to get people outside after they've eaten those big meals. We also host, ongoing for over sixteen years, Second Saturday Volunteer Days to help keep the Greenway clean, to help keep our gardens green. And we added a third Saturday event, Peace, Love, and Unity Park Cleanup because there was so much illegal dumping happening around Unity Park Plaza. We do that event with our partners Moving Forward and Rich City Rides. Next slide, please. So we've been partnering and wanting to partner even more with the city to really address especially the blight issues that we experience on, along the Richmond Greenway and in some of the other parks in Richmond. Um, we want to make sure that the council knows that our dedication is not just through pop-up, one-off events, but we've had a really deep, uh, dedication to the Richmond Greenway. We support five full-time equivalent positions that are only dedicated to the Richmond Greenway. So they're out every day, cleaning up the park, cleaning up our adopt-a-spot. They clean the restrooms. They dump the trash cans. They collect the trash. They dump the materials with the support of the city. They report graffiti. Sometimes they clean up graffiti if it's really egregious. They pick up discarded needles. Some, um, for some reason, somebody keeps dumping boxes of used needles, um, in Unity Park Plaza. We pick those up. We weed and we mulch the landscaping, as well as take care of our adopt-a-spot. Our team is bold. They deal with all kinds of things. They love Unity Park. They love the Richmond Greenway and we are utterly dedicated to making sure it's a success. Each year, in order to make this happen, Urban Tilt raises independently over three hundred thousand dollars for the Greenway alone to support our activities, the cleanups, and all the other projects that we do along the Richmond Greenway. Next slide, please.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Serious listening.
I'm still not sure about that.
So, one of the other things that we want to make sure that everyone knows about is our north, our project in North Richmond, and that's the North Richmond Farm. For the past seven years, North, uh, Urban Tilt has been developing the North Richmond Farm. It's a three-acre, uh, used-to-be parcel of county-owned land that we just recently purchased from the county. Uh, we've been restoring the soils. We've been developing a really complex organic farming operation. We're actually in the process of being certified organic. We're in year one of a three-year process. Um, and now we're embarking on major capital improvements to that property that will see a permanent farm stand, farm store, open seven days a week to North Richmond, offering fresh, healthy produce for free and for sale to support our activities for free for people who don't have the funds and for people who can support, they can support with funds. Um, the facility will also have a community commercial kitchen, a cooperatively-run cafe, a community room, and a watershed center and amphitheater. Urban Tilt is working, is also working with Contra Costa County with the Fred Jackson Way First Mile Last Mile Urban Greening Project to connect the residential area of North Richmond to the farm by extending the sidewalk and adding a bike path and a rain garden. We're doing really phenomenal work at this site. We truly believe it'll be a flagship not just for Richmond, but for urban agriculture, for the state, and for the nation. We've had so much attention from national media, from, um, international people, and we believe this will be something that can attract a lot of positive attention to Richmond and help grow a future for, for our young people. Next slide, please. So we want to ask the city to partner with us more, to look for opportunities where we can use the work that we've been doing to really galvanize young people in this city towards working, learning, and moving towards positive, uh, outcomes for Richmond. Um, so we invite the city to have a deeper partnership with, with, uh, with us on the Richmond Greenway and beyond. Um, we're currently working with the Community Services and the Recreation Department and City Manager's Office to create a memorandum of understanding so we can actually solidify our partnership and, and help, um, help each other do, do this work, do more of this work. Some of the things that we want to address in that is, um, making it easier to communicate about our events, um, removing barriers from doing volunteer projects. Um, I like the permitting process, kind of easing those things that we can actually bring more services, bring more work, bring more events to the Richmond community. We want to continue to do all of these great events. There's lots of things planned. Like I said, the annual fruit tree, uh, giveaway is coming up in March, March twelfth. Um, we're gonna have a new community mural right next to the playground, um, that we are doing um, to help brighten up that area so the kids will have something really positive to look at that reflects on the power of the imagination and nature, um, instead of broken-down fences and, and kind of graffiti. So we're gonna host a Earth Day event. We're gonna have our Summer Youth Apprentice Program out on the Greenway again. And one of the things we're really excited about is we've been raising money and working through a design process to bring a truly ADA-accessible garden to Seventeenth Street on the Richmond Greenway. That garden will be made so that people who are in wheelchairs or have differently-abled bodies can actually come and sit and garden. They can plant. They can roll right up underneath the garden beds and be active in the garden, not just roll along the pathway and not be able to really participate in anything. Um, it'll have, uh, water fountains and other, um, facilities to make it really a nice place for our seniors and for our disabled communities so they can be a part of the park and not just viewers, not just people who watch it from, from the pathway. Really excited about that project. And finally, um, the North Richmond Farm has come under a little bit of large threat by a recent development. Um, and we ask for the city to look into this with us and support our petition, our campaign to stop or redirect that development. Um, there's a planned four-story development next to the North Richmond Farm that will create shade. About up to four hours a day, we'll lose sunlight on the farm, making it really difficult for us to expand our growing operations and feed all those people we're planning to feed. So we're asking that the city look into this with us and see if you can support our bid to have no shade on the North Richmond Farm. There's a, a link here to the petition. Next slide, please. So here's our contact information. We're at the North Richmond Farm every day. There's a, a link for, to our, uh, email. There's a link to our website and we're on across social media. Um, and that's what I have to offer. I hope that by going over all of, all of the things that Urban Tilt is today, we can brainstorm and think of ways that we can support the city and support our community more. One last thing I'd like to talk about before I close and open it up for any questions that you may have is we're really proud to have the opportunity recently to address one of the issues that we've been, um, experiencing on the Greenway. And that was, you know, we had a big problem getting regular trash cleanup. Um, and what we did was we actually worked with one of our funders, uh, the Hellman Foundation, and connected it with the city to get, to actually have Hellman give the city some much-needed funding to support the Parks and Landscaping Committee and, uh, Parks and Landscaping Division. And through that contact and through that, that partnership, now I've been told that there's a grant made to the city so the city can buy two additional trucks and trailers from the Hellman Foundation, from one of our funders, so we can help solve some of the, uh, problems that we've been experiencing trying to work in the parks in, in Richmond. So we look forward to kind of creative ways of partnering like that, as well as, you know, looking at permits and looking to see how else we can partner to serve the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doria. Are there any, uh, questions from council members? Uh, Councilwoman Willis and then Jimenez?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, Doria. I was just gonna see if you could, um, reiterate, uh, reiterate, um, ways that we could better, that the city could better partner with Urban Tilt in terms of what you, just reiterate that vision you had in mind. And also, um, what kind of support would you be looking for the city to help, uh, save the farm from what's its current, what current obstacle faces it right now with the four hours of shade potentially coming to the farm?
Yeah. So first off, um, one of the things that we've been kind of struggling with is the need to communicate about our activities, um, so that we have safety. And usually that's done through permits. Um, recently, we've been told that in not just the large events that we have, but every event that we have, every volunteer event, every, every event will need to have a permit. Um, we're working with, when, when we were told that, we definitely brought it to the attention of, of different folks within the city and some community services and city managers. And so now we're working on a, a different option for that because that is administratively, uh, like just a nightmare to be able, to have to put a permit and cost-wise, to have to basically pay to organize volunteers to clean the park through this permit process and, you know, pay to, to, to clean up and care for the park, pay to do our bathroom cleanup days. It seems like we're trying to do the city a service by offering this and organizing volunteers and we'd like to make it so that we can actually, you know, still communicate about what we're doing so that police knows, so everyone knows, and there's clarity and, and safety, but streamline the process so that we don't have an administrative burden to have to get permits with all the timelines and dates and financial burdens of adding additional costs on trying to do this work. So that's like the, the biggest thing that we like to do, that and just partner clo-, more closely on our anti-dumping campaign. We had a dumpster day, which was brilliantly supported by the city. The city gets the dumpsters for us. But we were hearing really valuable information from community members. We had over fifty people come out thanking us over and over again. I didn't have money to dump this stuff that was sitting in my yard. One man ran with a couch on his back that had been sitting in his front yard that he was, didn't want to put on the street. He didn't want to put it there, but he was getting to the point where he's like, I need it to go. He's like, the rats are coming, whatever. He couldn't afford to dump it. And so, you know, we're hearing this feedback. We're hearing that people need a place, at least periodically, where they can bring their stuffs because they don't want to put it in the street. They don't want to put it in the park, but they really just cannot afford to take it to the dump. And so we want to communicate with the city about that and brainstorm alternative ways so that we don't, you know, right now we're doing this anti-dumping campaign, um, where we're having monthly dumpster days. Um, but I think that maybe we should work with the city to make something more institutional that the city runs, um, to answer that problem. And then finally, with the No Shade Campaign, we would really love it if, if, if the city supports our work, all the people that we feed, not just the four hundred people we feed weekly through the, the food boxes, but we also do three pop-up free farm stands in Crescent Park in North Richmond and on the Richmond Greenway that feed an additional hundred and twenty families every week, as well as drop boxes and bags at various places who ask for it, churches and other places. If you want that to continue and you support what we're doing with young people in this community, giving them jobs, giving them training, um, you know, helping them to become leaders, please write a statement saying how important the farm is to this compute, this community. Um, communicate that to the Contra Costa County Department of Public Works as they're considering this campaign so they can, you know, encourage the developer to either change their plan or, you know, get a new plan for what they're planning to put right on the property line at least, at the minimum. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Jimenez?
Thank you, Doria, for the great work. I am part of the CSA, so I give my backs and it's wonderful. So everybody, uh, can pay, pay because it's really not only a great thing for us to have, but also to support other people who cannot afford fresh food and this is incredible. Um, I, I want, um, you know, we have been talking about Curitiba and you know, Curitiba and the plan and, uh, I think, uh, continue talking about how, um, the city can support and is skilled, the work that you are doing to feed more people. We, uh, what COVID nineteen showed us is that, um, we have a lot of, um, issues a-around families that are not able to afford, uh, food and, and good food and quality of food. So that, and looking forward to partner with you around that and Curitiba is a good model. Um, happy to, uh, co-sponsor or sponsor a resolution, uh, to support the farm. Um, um, so I will be looking forward to working with you on that and bringing it to the city council. Uh, to, so we can, if it passes, we can send it to, um, the county. Um, and I wanted to thank also Chasa and LaShanda uh, that had been working with me and, and in, in the idea of how we do the MOUs, but also how we lower the fees uh, for those organizations in the city who are filling the gaps of services. Uh, so the MOU, I am glad to hear that the MOU that you are working on is part of that. Uh, uh, I know that LaShanda and Shasta have been working on that and they are going to bring some, eh, eh, schedule feeds, uh, where, um, the idea is how we start like a more, um, support and partnership with the organization like you and other organizations so they can, um, we can provide the services so that, uh, let a, eh, less fees are put into these organizations so more kids or more community members can access to these, uh, services because you are doing a great job in filling the gap of services for young folks and for the residents in Richmond. So thank you and, um, if you have any other idea on how we can support, I'm always happy to, to work with you. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Yes, I also wanted to thank you, Doria, for all the work you've, um, been doing, um, hiring youth and, um, getting so many volunteers. I've been at your cleanups and there's so many dedicated, hard-working volunteers that, and, you know, employees that you have that make a huge difference in cleaning up the Greenway. And they do it because they love to do it. They do it because they love the Greenway. And I think, um, you are very much instrumental in cultivating that love of the work and love of the, the Greenway and the space. Um, I was going to also ask about the North Richmond Farm. I was going to also ask about the North Richmond Farm that both Councilmember Willis and Jimenez have talked about. An additional question would be, when is that going to come before the Board of Supervisors? Is, is there an EIR or is it, is, you know, what is the timeline on that?
Yeah, it's unclear what the exact timeline will be. It, it, there will be an EIR, there will be a secret document where we can comment at those times. It's unclear where, where and if there'll be other moments to comment. We had, we did do a comment session to the planner that's working on the initial permit. There's a, we had over 50 people write letters, including doctors from the local health clinics, talking about the impact. And, and the Attorney General for the State of California kind of reiterated their submission that they did about Center Point, which is right across the street from this new proposed development. There's development over development on development. So the short answer is it's, the process is a little unclear. We think we have about two other opportunities to, to intercede and to have voice our comments in the environmental review process. But we're also, you know, getting a lawyer and looking at other options. You know, some of the other things that are kind of sad about that is that, you know, that's his, the last, we believe, Japanese-owned nurseries in North Richmond or in Richmond that are left standing. The Nibeta Family Farm is, is the property that's being taken over and they're proposing to basically raise all of those historic buildings that are over 50 years old. And leaving nothing behind, like wiping that history off of the landscape. And so, you know, there's more than one reason, not just the emissions from 150 parking places that are proposed in four-story buildings shading out the farm, but the wiping off of the history of our community and the Japanese influence that has been here for so long. So yeah, we're hoping that we can get all the support we can get to plot a different path.
Yeah, well, thank you. And I definitely support that and will do whatever. Again, I imagine Supervisor Joya is on board. You know, we can connect with him as well. And, you know, it sounds like a resolution will be coming forth, which I fully support. So thank you for your ongoing work. So, and this was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments from council members? I don't see. Go ahead, Councilmember Bates.
I listened to your presentation, Doris, and I understand that you indicated you have to get permits. What permits are you referring to? Because I thought this property was in the county area.
There's two different things. When we were talking about the permits, we're talking about our work on the Greenway. And that's special event permits, event permits. Right now, we normally will do a special event permit if we're having, you know, 100 or more people out there. We want to make sure it's safe. We want to make sure that the police know what we're doing. So if anything happens, everyone's informed and we can react fast. But current, recently, we were asked to start doing that for every activity. And that is, that would be just, just painful in terms of the administrative burden. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a lengthy process. You have to, it's a timed process. Is it a cost? I mean, just for us to do the roller disco where we went roller skating in the park, the permit was over $900 and we had no services from the city for that day. And so it's just, it's painful. And we're trying to make events and things that people can get out and be healthy in the parks and keep it clean and, you know, take care of the gardens. And to have another burden on top of that, it, 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 if the city wants also for us to do these kinds of healthy, fun, active things, we'd like for them to actually support that with, with, you know, revising the permit process for those things.
What?
For the farm is different.
Yeah. What kind of funding you receive from the city?
We get, we recently got a Love Your Block grant. So that is a $10,000 grant that supports our activities on the Greenway. We also got a $5,000 community services grant. And this year, we were really excited to get the Richmond Fund for Children and Youth. And that's funding, helping to fund the Richmond High Program and the Summer Apprentice Program. That was for $80,000.
Well, I appreciate your, your information. I think that programs like yours and others need to be directed to the city manager to facilitate a, a, a process whereby you're not stuck with the fees. I know others have asked to do certain programs in the city, for the city, in the benefit of the city. And they come in again with enormous fees that you have to pay. They're treating you like you're an outside profitable group. And I don't think that was the intent. So I think this council has to discuss this with the city manager. Come up with a process whereby organizations like yours and others are not saddled with an enormous permit fee process. So thank you for your presentation.
I appreciate that. And I just want to say that we have, you know, luckily when this, when this issue was kind of brought to Chasa's attention, the city manager's attention and LaShonda's attention, they recognized right away that, you know, not quite sure how this all happened. Let's figure out how to make a better process. So we are working with them and to have city council support on working on this is, is golden. Thank you so much.
One last point. I noticed you have some young people. Are you involved in helping to clean up this city?
I mean, I hope so.
Well, I mean, you know, like we got trash all over the city.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's seen to be very unattended.
Yeah.
And especially it seemed like an organization like yours, gonna have these young people with a lot of energy. A few dollars could go a long ways. And, yep, maintaining the cleanliness of this city.
Yeah. So twice, twice, twice a month on the Greenway, we do cleanups, picking up trash, picking up dumped items. Every day on the Greenway, we pick up trash. We pick up at least a half of the pickup truck load of dumped items. The whole anti-dumping campaign. We also do regular cleanups at Wildcat Creek in North Richmond. We just did a cleanup at Point Mulatto Park. We did a cleanup in Miller Knox. We do cleanups all over and we feel like that kind of service is really central. Like you can't really love and care for a place that you live in if it's full of trash. It makes you feel bad. It makes our babies feel bad, you know? And so it's a big part of what we do, that, that.
Well, one last point. As a past president of the West Contra Costa Integrated Waste, along with Councilmember McLaughlin and Willis being on that body. And you need to discuss this with Chasa. The Richmond Sanitation are committed to every household being provided an opportunity for large items such as a mattress, a refrigerator, whatever. They will pick up free twice, as I recall, a year. So you should be able, they shouldn't have to pack all that stuff to you. All they have to do is call the Richmond Sanitation or the Republic Sanitation and have, notify them. They will have a, a large item out and it will be picked up.
Yeah, I, I agree. And what we learned, especially in that cleanup we just did, the dumpster day we just did, is that people don't know. They don't know. People were arriving with screens and with all kinds of hazardous, households had a diswaste and we had a big map up saying where the household hazardous waste facility was. You know, that you put it on your phone. Like you can take it there right now. Please take it. And they're like, it's free? I just drive through. They had never been there, never heard of. One lady says she had lived here for 10 years and that, and never knew she could get rid of the mattresses for free. And so we were giving out information. You know, the dumpster is not just to collect, but it's try to attract people who have things to throw away. So we can tell them the information that we know. So we have, we have flyers, we have other things on resources. Where do you take that paint? Where do you take that oil? Do you take that computer? Take that mattress? And we've been giving that out and people have been thanking us because they did not know. People don't know. Especially so the, what we just did, we mailed to every house within two blocks of the Greenway. And that's why we got such a big response and just people just did not know what their options were. And quite frankly, there are barriers to some of our, some of the residents that live here who don't have IDs and who don't have those kinds of things to access some of the services that we're talking about. And so we actually need to look at that as well. Because if you can't prove that you're a Richmond resident because you don't have ID or you don't have bills in your name, you can't dump at the household hazardous waste facility for free. You know? So there's things that we also need to fix in the process if we really want to get this trash off the street. Because I strongly believe every single person who brought us stuff said they don't want to put it in the street. They're sick of living in trash, but they can't afford it.
Okay, Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you. I was going to slide by without saying anything because I think it's understood how much I appreciate all the work that you do and what you do for the city of Richmond. But since you mentioned paying $900 to do, to use the park to do the roller, roller event, you know, it, it brought to mind just, just last council meeting, we, we voted on, on rates, city rates, park rates. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the Richmond Community Tennis Association uses our tennis courts for free. And that, and that, and that we were trying to get some sort of of a break for, for the pickleball community. Because, because both, both those organizations bring something to Richmond. And likewise, you bring something to Richmond and you should enjoy those same sorts of privileges because you do add to what is going on in Richmond. You know, I, 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 I watch, I watch those videotapes of, of, of the roller, of roller events. And it, it makes me wish I was more coordinated so that, so that I could participate. But I just, I, I, I think that the staff should bring something to us so that, so that we can, we can help you help us. So thank you.
Yeah. Martin Luther King Day cost us over $1,500 just for the permit.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clark, we have public speakers?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we have Naomi Williams. Naomi, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hi, Dora. I, I understand you've been in business for eons. But I wanted to know, you said you had to buy some property to do something with from the county? And my next question was, did the county pay Richmond any money for doing that, getting that property over there where Rice is? That's county property. I mean, it's a county event. So I was just wondering about the two. Maybe the city can answer that question. I'm not sure. But keep up the good work and I'm hungry. So I'll be over there for some greens.
We gotta get to some greens.
Okay, that was what I wanted. If I could get an answer to that, that'd be great.
Yeah. Well, so we, we did have to purchase the property that the North Richmond Farm is on from the county. I do feel like they gave us a very fair rate that was, you know, below below what other asking prices are. So that was helpful, but we did.
But, but if they did not pay for that land over there where Rice is, I'm just wondering, wouldn't that be a fair trade?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what the situation was with Rice, but I can tell you that we did have to pay for the land that we were on.
Okay. Maybe the council can find it out.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yanni Garcia. Yanni, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, good evening. Buenas noches. I'm just, I just want to say, Doria, that I believe in the work that Urban Tilt does because I was honored to have served as one of the Board of Directors for your organizations for several years. I was at the groundbreaking event when we first, I say we, I always say we when I talk about Urban Tilt. But thank you because I know that you make Urban Tilt our community organizations. I always say we, but I remember being at that Break, Breakground event and just being able to see the progress and what you've done with our community and having land that produces food and that keeps us alive in sustainable ways is empowering. I commend you for the work that you do even with the challenges that, that the city and the county has over the years shown. And so it's really important that everyone gets involved in understanding the work that Urban Tilt does, why it's important. We were just, I was just at the Community Action Event on more development being done in the North Richmond Farm area. And we need everybody on deck because this is the land that is producing food for our community. So we need to keep it alive. Please, if you're able to donate to Urban Tilt, their work and get involved because we need everyone to continue to support us. And Doria, you know that you have my full support. And we will continue to work together to make sure that food justice doesn't get swept under the rug, but that we keep fighting for it. And not just being able to harvest and learn about food justice, but also fighting for the land that is ours. So we, we gotta keep fighting for that. So thank you.
Thank you. And there are no more public speakers.
Okay, thank you. That was a, that was a great presentation, great discussion. Let's move on to item oh one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Mayor Butt, if I may, I, I again want to thank Doria for the presentation this, this morning and thank her for coordinating with Gebino and our city manager's office and LaShonda and community services. And just to reiterate that the, our goal and our plan is to come to city council in March with an update pertaining to the fee waiver and a, a process around how we can have MOUs with organizations in Richmond to facilitate better community and city partnerships. We really appreciate the work that many of our nonprofits are doing in our community. And we think that there are certainly ways for us to operationalize the work and make it easier to partner administratively and financially. So we're working towards that and we look forward to having a discussion with the council in March.
Okay, that's great. Okay, Madam Clark, go ahead and read item oh one.
Item oh one is to receive a presentation on the potential vacant property tax ballot measure. Provide direction on next steps. Approve a contract amendment number two with SCI Consulting Group. Modify the potential vacant property tax service plan to include Phase Three task. Increasing the payment limits by 46,500 for a total amount not to exceed 111,770. And extending the term to December 31st, 2022. And appropriate 46,500 for the contract expenditure to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget.
Good evening, Mayor Butt and City Council. And before I pass it off to Ms. Velasco and John Bliss, I want to thank all the city staff that have worked on this effort collaboratively. In particular, I would like to thank Samantha Carr, our environmental manager. I just know that everything she does is not about straws and styrofoam and plastic bands, but she's done a lot of really heavy lifting here, working collaboratively with staff and, and John to, to get this item before you. Also would like to thank Thomas Amolo, management analyst in our office, who's also been part of the team. And really hope that the council is pleased with the, with the amount of due diligence that has taken place and the level of analysis that, that you're going to be provided with this evening so you can make informed policy decisions. At the end of the presentation, our hope and our desire is that you'll give us some feedback and that we will be moving and working promptly to come back to you on March 1st. To enable us, if you all are so inclined, to meet the March 11th deadline with the county. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Velasco and John Bliss.
Thank you, Ms. Curl. First to confirm, everybody can see my slides? Yes. Okay, perfect. So good evening, Mayor, council members. So this evening, we are going to provide you an update on the Phase Two work related to the vacant property tax. We'll be seeking direction that will help inform a potential ordinance plus ballot measure for council consideration at March meeting. And depending on the direction provided, it, we're asking for approval of a contract amendment for SCI Consulting to expand their work for Phase Three tasks. That also increases the payment limit and the term of the contract. It would also require an appropriation of funding to cover the additional expenditures for the work. So as a way of background, a vacant parcel tax was suggested to be evaluated and you'll hear the term vacant parcel tax tonight and a vacant property tax. So we will describe, we are proposing a vacant property tax because we are going to So we will describe, we are proposing a vacant property tax because we are going to um or we're recommending that it also include uh developed property that is vacant for a certain period of time and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, and so as part of that work, we we did enter into a contract with SCI Consulting, who's been doing um this work in other communities um such as Oakland. Um, so the goals of the vacant property tax would be to encourage the use and the development of vacant properties. Um, by doing this, we'll be able to reduce hotspots for blight crime and illegal dumping that's often associated with vacant properties. Um, it would also provide a funding stream to better address blight abatement as well as code compliance. Um, and overall, it would provide some additional revenues that would help the city achieve its goal of uh financial sustainability. So, as I mentioned before, SCI Consulting work is currently doing work with the city of Richmond in different areas, including our cannabis equity ordinance. Uh, they do fee studies as well um for the lighting and landscaping districts as well as applications. Um, and currently SCI is doing work for the city of Oakland related to implementation of their vacant property tax. Um, and they're supporting the city and the administration of that ordinance. Uh, so with that, I will pass it to John, who will provide some additional details on uh the vacant property tax.
Thank you, Lena, and good evening, Mayor Butt, mi- members of the city council staff and members of the public. Um, as Lena said, my name is John Bliss. I'm president of SCI Consulting Group. We're based in Solano County and we have an office in Fairfield and in Oakland. And we appreciate the opportunity to work with staff on this project, particularly I'll 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 reiterate what um city manager Curl said. Lena, James Atencio, um Samantha and Thomas have all been part of this team. And 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 we've been asked under a relatively short period of time to do really thorough investigation and and ultimately make a recommendation um to that you should consider a vacant property tax um to meet the the goals of blight reduction and also revenue generation. Essentially vacant property taxes are um taxes placed on under unused or underused properties um within a city based on their vacancy status. And I'll give a little more detail about that. Essentially, the process is is straightforward. We're we're we identify what are the vacant properties and we use a variety of tools to do that. We communicate with those owners. We give them ample opportunity to come back to us with reasons that they may be exempt or it is not not vacant. And if and only if they um after that review, they still exist as vacant properties. We go ahead and place the taxes typically on the property tax bill and they're collected by the city that way. And so I'm going to continue. I've got about twenty twenty five slides. I tend to work pretty quickly. There's a lot of information on some of the slides and I'm going to kind of summarize on those slides and then really emphasize a few key points. I am joined tonight by my colleague, Chris Coulter. He's one of my employees and he really led it and he's really the state's expert on vacant property taxes. He led the very successful implementation of this type of tax nearby in the city of Oakland. And as I think Shasa said, there's four phases to this. The first phase was, hey, does this even make sense? Are there vacant properties that could generate revenue for the city of Richmond? And we went ahead and do it, did that. The second phase was more detailed. We did a community survey. We engaged the public in a number of ways and we came up with recommendations as to a go no go for vacant property tax as well as key elements of this. Depending on your direction tonight um and on um next week, you you'll be asked to give you'll you'll be asked to give direction on some of the specifics as well as whether you all want to go forward with the tax. And then that would be the third phase. The fourth phase is if the taxes are approved by voters, there's administration, there's the identification of the vacant the vacant properties each year and lots of communication. So it's a tax that has a fairly high administrative burden, but it also generates good revenue and and hopefully nudges improved behavior of property tax at property owners. So let's go ahead to go to the next slide. And again, let's buckle up. So that I I'm not going to go in, I'm not going to read the slides to you. I'm going to highlight. So tonight in the middle of the slide in bold is is the February twenty second, we're going to go over the survey results, go over the recommendations and receive direction from you. Next week on March first, you're going to be asked potentially if you'd like to go forward and approve the ordinance and direct the uh um direct essentially pass a resi- what's called a resolution of consolidation to place it on one of the elections likely June, but you're going to have some choices on that. If you decide to go forward and on the June ballot, that would be on June seventh to the thousand twenty two. So just in a few months. Next slide, please. So the phase one was, hey, does do we have vacant properties that would benefit from this kind of tax and we could generate revenue? So we took a look at this and we we look at a variety of different revenue amounts, tax amounts ranging from three thousand to eight thousand. We we gave a number of scenarios. We looked at the this the universe of of vacant properties. And then we divide our our narrowed that down based on estimated number of exemptions, a variety of things. So we got really conservative with this and got some conservative revenue numbers. Those conservative revenue ma- numbers ranged from about one point two to about one point eight million dollars per year, just to give you kind of a size, a perspective on how much revenue something like this would generate. Next slide, please. So then in phase two, which we're just completing really tonight, we did a variety of things. First of all, we wanted to talk to stakeholders and get out there and talk to folks. We had um three community meetings that were reasonably well attended. And it went and you know, we had between ten and twenty participants and a number of them that I participated in. And we had very detailed um detailed conversation with property owners essentially. And so that was very insightful and I think they saw on balance um eh no one loves a new tax, but they saw saw the structure we're looking at and it seemed to make sense. We then did, we did a a mailed survey. We liked the mailed survey better than a phone because you can get more detail and get more information. Later in this presentation, I'll be sharing kind of the results with you. But really, the idea was, we like to do a mailed survey because it looks at a a a pass fail. It gives us a political insight as to the support levels of of going out for that tax. It also allows us to test preferences and priorities regarding blight, code compliance, and the underuse of vacant vacant parcels in particular, but also vacant commercial and and residential properties. Next slide, too, please. So this is what it looks like. It's a it's a mailed questionnaire on the right hand side. They're asked a a what we call a ballot question, which is, would you vote for this thing? How strongly do you feel about it? And then they had a number about about um about thirteen or fourteen questions, very very detailed on their priorities. We also have on the left hand side, you can see kind of a informational guide. It does, it's not advocating one way or the other, but it's giving some background as to what the city's looking like. We've used this survey method very successful for many, many years. We get very, very predictive results. So and 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 this was a a well-conducted um survey. We liked the return rates. We liked everything about it and it was it was consistent. So that gives you a feel of what it looks like. Um, just to give you a sense of the the how we we recommended or how we proposed the 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 structure of this tax. And this is what we would recommend if you decide to go for it. And this is what was presented to the property owners. Essentially, particularly here in rev- in Richmond, as you guys know, you have some very small lots, you have some medium sized lots, and then you actually have some large lots as well. Most cities don't have the range in parcel sizes you. So we wanted to manifest that. There was a fundamental fairness we were looking at. So we actually broke the parcels. These are are mostly residential parcels. Of course, commercial parcels tend to be bigger. But mostly residential parcels, we put into three buckets, five thousand square feet or less, five thousand to an acre, and then you have some large acre lots, mostly commercial, but you do have some residential lots, undeveloped residential lots that are are big. And so we, for the smallest bucket, it was a tax of three thousand dollars a year proposed. The middle bucket, five thousand and and the the larger ones, eight thousand. It's that's a big tax. I don't want to sugarcoat it. So that's a a heavy tax. It requires administration, but it really is is looking at at balancing generation of revenue as well as incentivizing a higher, better use of the parcels. So let's go to the next slide. So again, successful survey, we liked it. Um, it was out for six weeks. That's fairly typical. We had a return rate of about uh of nine percent. That gives us a pretty good margin of error. Um, la- under four percent. We like to get a little tighter, but that's still very successful and these results should be very predictive and very reliable. So let's go to the next slide. So this is a big one. This is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you on that graph on the right hand side, you get one bar, that's the green bar. Green for the rest of the the talk here. Green is support. Green is good. And what percentage of of Richmond voters, registered voters would support something like this? And over seventy percent. Again, for a special tax, the threshold is two thirds. So if you can go out and have a cold read survey above seventy percent, which this is, that's solid. We really like that. I'm gonna, I'm I bear with me. I'm gonna read the actual sentence to you. The ballot question is always important. Whenever you evaluate a survey, you want to get a little detailed on the words. The words matter. And so essentially, it says, in order to address blight and illegal dumping and enhance general revenue revenue resources to provide long-term fiscal sus- sustainability. Sorry. I'm having a little trouble saying that word, but that's the balance I was talking about, the two two goals. Would you support enacting a vacant property tax on vacant parcels used less than thirty days per year at the below annual rates, raising about two million annually with exemptions for very low income, low income seniors and hardship? So that's, we think that encapsulates it. We think that was a good question and 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 again, i- i- it's well represented in the results. Let's go to the next slide. I'm going to show you a little more detail. So this is really just a detailed slide of the one before. And if you can see, again, as I said, green is good. We get a little more detail here. We actually uh ask questions, uh give them a little more chances to give the levels of support so we can measure the softnesses of support. So again, the light green is a probably yes, the definitely yes is the dark green. The orange is probably no and the definitely no is the red. So the red, the twenty two percent, they won't move. They they're 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 solid in their viewpoint and they're opposed to it. Conversely, you have almost forty percent in the definitely yes. In fact, the definitely yes is bigger than the probably yes. That's unusual. Usually, it's the opposite. So so Richmond voters feel very strongly about this and a good chunk of them do. They probably know at seven point six, that's usually small. It's very small in your case. But what I what we like is you've got a little room to get that seventy percent up. You can eh you can probably get it up another five percentage points and and we like that. We we like the fact that Richmond voters are very strong in their support. The definitely knows are relatively small and we can probably work with the probably knows with a little more information, get their support. So again, this is a good looking results. We we feel comfortable with that. Let's go to the next slide. So this is, if you remember, I gave a, we we included a questionnaire. I will not go all over all of these, but I want to summarize these and in your own time, you can read what they are. These are, these are questions to measure preferences of priority, to dig a little deeper and see and better understand why what um Richmond voters are interested in terms of this. And again, if you look on the bars on the 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 right hand side, these are sorted the most favorable down to the least favorable. Again, green is good and supportive. Um, red is is negative and not supportive. And we put some arrows on the left hand side to kind of give you some help as to what folks were interested in. They're very, very concerned about blight and would like investment in blight control. They're very concerned about illegal dumping and would like resources invested there. And you can see those are right at the top. Just to to, I'm just going to read one of the questions and it is blighted properties and illegal dumping severely damaged the vitality, safety and economic progress of the city. We need to do something about it. That is very bold to come up. Usually something general like that doesn't test the highest. In this case, it did. So that's a very bold statement. And if you look, it's higher than anything else by far. So that's a very strong, some of the kind of administrative um eh administrative um elements of the measure down at the bottom didn't test as well. That's not surprising. Again, this is consistent. The results are consistent with a a community that's interested in blight, illegal dumping, code enforcement, and is is also very interested in relating the services to the tax. So we got that loud and clear. They really want this tax to pay for those services. They were less supportive of kind of general revenue. So actually, perfect. Um, next slide, I I I'm I'm ready to go. And this is kind of repetitive of what I just said. The top priorities are reducing and mitigation of blight, illegal dumping and and special use, not the general revenue enhancement was not as appealing. And so there's an opportunity to teach a little bit more on that. And so um eh bold seventy percent in favor of vacant property tax without any community outreach on it. Um, if for vacant parcels used then less than thirty days a year. Let's go to the next slide. Um, so now I'm going to kind of, that was kind of the background to tell you how we got here. And now the next five slides I we've got to show with to you are some of the details. The devil is in the details. There's some of the elements that we recommend um that you consider. And and as as I think Lena said, we had the opportunity to work with the city of Oakland on their implementation under contract for the last three years. That was really the first major vacant property tax in the United States. The city of Vancouver in Canada has a famous one as well. But so we have the advantage and I would say of of really understanding and going through the whole process in Oakland and we learned a lot. Um, it was a very successful implementation and we want to share what we learned in Oakland here with you. So I'm going to kind of go over a variety of things. Again, it's going to get fairly wonky and policy-y here. And so bear with me. Um, the first thing is we wanted to look at the different categories and I want to teach some or talk about some vocabulary we'll be using. When we say a vacant parcel, that means undeveloped raw raw ground. And that's a very important key part of any vacant property tax. And so and then when we call non-in use developed parcels, those can be grouped in a variety of things. It's a single family home. It's commercial, it's industrial, it's condominiums. And then there's another one that is often with a vacant property tax and that is unused vacant ground floor, often they're commercial spaces, often they have residential above. And this is a big issue in cities that are developing new houses, new new six to ten to twenty story buildings. They often have um commercial on the first floor, often as a condition of development, and too often it's not being used. So they so it's a way of generating revenue and nudging the use of those spaces. Um, uh, the other thing we looked at is another element that we looked at is should a factor of whether that property be blighted or not affect the use of those buckets? So let's, again, we're going to go on the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit more about that in detail. So let's go to the next slide. So so uh so again, what we're looking at is we're defining vacant as a property in use um less than thirty days per year. So if someone lives in a house for twenty nine days and the rest of the year it's vacant, we are saying that that would be subject to the tax with the following conditions and exceptions. The first thing I want to talk about is raw ground undeveloped. This is extremely important. And that is there's a number of parcels in every city and in Richmond where an owner owns a parcel with a single family home on it and the parcel adjoining next door. It can be a full size or part size parcel. We call that, for lack of a better term, this isn't exactly precise, a side yard parcels. We recommend strongly that those are exempt. They're often used as a garden or yard bar some by someone. They they could combine them, but that's an additional cost. And many property owners that were concerned about the tax in Oakland, this was their real concern. So and Oakland exempted them as well, and we recommend you do that. There's another less common type of vacant lot, which is an ingress egress parcel. It's a driveway parcel in front of our to access to a house. We think that that parcel also should be exempted. So those are are our recommendations. Other than that, every raw ground vacant property in the city, we would um recommend you consider taxing. So then we have the next bucket, which are developed parcels. And for residential, which are single family or or multifamily, non-residential, which can be industrial industrial or commercial condos, um or what I talked about on that ground floor of a a commercial building or residential building, we're recommending you tax those with blight, only if they are blighted. And we'll talk a little bit about that standard. You already have a pretty sound standard, very sound standard here in Richmond. So what we're saying is every vacant lot, other than side yards and and driveway parcels, every developed property that's vacant, other than and and is blighted. So only tax them if they're blighted and developed. Next slide, please. So again, this this slide's a little bit repetitive. We talked a little bit in in A there about the raw ground. I'm not going to go into that. B, we're we're with the thirty days we mentioned, um, just a couple of details on that. Um, we wanna, we want to make sure that that if they're if they're occupied, they're occupied in a legal way. And um with within all of the um uh uh any uh any code or zoning ordinance has to be followed for them to be legally occupied um to 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 satisfy the in. for them to be legally occupied, um, to, 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 to satisfy the in-use requirement. And then the third thing that C, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about, is we're recommending what we call a petition or exemption process. So once the, once the, the property potentially subject to the tax is identified, we call that the mailing list. It's, all of those property owners are communicated with, and they are given ample opportunity to respond. And we can call that petition process or exemption process. Some of those will, in fact, the line share often is, they will, they will indicate that, and, and we require evidence um, that it's actually occupied, that we've identified it as vacant when it's actually occupied. That would only be for a developed property. And then the other, um, the other thing they can do, other that type of exemption, there's five or six other exemptions. I'm gonna go over here in a second that we recommended that you consider, and I think they're on the next slide. Let's go to the next slide. Actually, no, there is a couple more slides. So let me talk a little bit about this. This is another subtlety but important aspect of a vacant property tax. Essentially, you're, you're trying to, the, the tax is based on the behavior of the property owner. Are, are they maintaining it properly, or is it vacant or not? And it's, and it's, and it's evaluated over the course of a year. Because of that, we strongly recommend that the property owners are, i- i- if, if you all go forward and the tax is approved, there's a communication period where we make sure property owners are aware of the, the tax, and giving them the year to change the behavior, either in occupancy or, or maintenance. And so, just to be clear, if this was approved, for example, if you look at the second bullet point in June of twenty twenty-two on that ballot, we actually would then evaluate them of the, during the year of, of, of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and then they would be subject to the tax, they wouldn't be subject to the tax until fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. So it is a tax that takes, the, the, the first year is really an evaluation year to let them affect their behavior. And then we look backwards and make an evaluation on whether they're subject to the tax. I can talk a little bit more about that in Q and A, but I, I wanna make sure everyone understands that. That's what, um, um, Oakland did, they were considering not doing that. And, um, fortunately, cooler heads provided, prevailed, and they went ahead and did, did that. We think that's essential. Let me talk a little bit about how we identify potentially taxable parcels. The raw ground vacant parcels are well-defined in the, um, in, in the use codes by the county. We can also look at aerial photographs, and we can actually do drive-bys and to identify the raw dirt. The others are trickier. Um, I'm gonna talk mainly on a single-family home, but we look at for a variety of things that, um, that are flags or markers that may indicate vacancy. And it may be if the property tax bill is, goes to a different address than the home. That's imperfect, but it gives you a start. There's, um, permit records, there's code enforcement records. We look at water utilities, other type things, and take a look. And, and we were able to, to identify the, the vacant properties with a very, very high degree of accuracy in Oakland. And we think we would be able to do the same thing here in Richmond. However, I want you to know, um, that there is a limitation to that, that research. It, it is imperfect, and that's why we need to have a robust, well-communit, communicated proper process where property owners can, can, um, appeal for a reconsideration, and we do that, do that additional research. Let's go ahead and do the next slide. Um, and so, the items for council direction, and as, as Shasa said, we're, there, there's about eight things that we wanna get some input from you here tonight. I'm gonna read them off here, and then we've got a, a quick slide on each of them to give you a little more input. And then when I finish here, we can answer any questions, and then we'd like to take the input. So the, the first one we wanna talk about is a special tax versus general. When would you like to do it? Which exemptions? We've got some information on an assistance program, some information on some tax relief for a certain type of buyer. We can talk about rate, we can talk about the idea of a sunset and a couple of other attributes. So I wanna get off this slides and, and kind of walk through this. So special tax versus a general tax. There's a variety of differences, but for your, um, guidance or your, your input here today, really what we're looking at, what, what we would like to know is, if the council would prefer the tax to, to, the, the money to be earmarked specifically in the measure to go for anti-blight and anti, um, anti-illegal dumping is, um, services as well as improved code compliance. A general tax, on the other hand, you don't have that requirement. So it's, it's just, can be used in the general fund. I think, uh, uh, at the risk of being repetitive, the survey really showed a strong preference for a special tax. And that's what staff ultimately is recommending to you. So let's go to the next slide. So June or November ballot, um, that, we have set this up to, if we, if we follow the, the guidelines and the timelines as we've described, we can do this on the June ballot. There's a number of advantages of doing that. It, it, it will start the clock sooner, it will, um, it will distance itself from, from other issues that may be included in November. So we think there's a really good opportunity, and staff is recommending to you that you consider the June seventh ballot. Let's go to the next one. So exemptions, and I'm gonna go over these rapidly, we've touched on some of them. There's kind of six groups we really like. One of them is a very low-income exemption, you can see the numbers on that, that would, would be required in terms of income for someone to be very low-income. There's a, a, another group that we think is even more important, and it's low-income local seniors. So there's an age requirement. You can see that low income is a higher income than very low. And also, they have some, they have to prove some residency requirement. Details not exactly figured out yet in terms of being local. The, the third bullet point, and I'm not gonna read all those to you, is they're actively developing or active construction. We can get into the weeds on that, but, but you get the idea. Then the last three are important, and I wanna differentiate those three. And I'll give you an example for each one. These are exemptions that Oakland used and, and worked out, and they were very, very effective and very important. So I hope you'll consider them. First of all, if someone has a financial hardship, they have proof of a recent bankruptcy would be an example. That's financial in nature, that they could apply for an exemption, and they might get it. The second one is we call demonstrable hardship. That's not financial, but it may be something like a death in the family, the owner died, something like that, or a serious illness that's not financial in nature, but really has impacted their ability to, to use that property, to maintain it, to make sure it's occupied. And then the last one is exceptional physical circumstances. There are some properties, some vacant lots that for geological reasons, or they're on a too steep of a slope, they're unbuildable, or there's so, some soil conditions. We don't get many of those, but it's something that we think should be included. And so, all of these exemptions would be right in the ordinance if, if you guys, if you all, um, agreed and, and, and propose them. But these are typical exemptions that we recommend you consider. Let's go to the next slide. So this is something that what we, I think we heard about fairly strongly in a couple of the community meetings. And it, keeping in the spirit of a vacant property tax that is encouraging and incentivizing better use of the property development, um, um, residential development, there may be some, um, program that could be funded, at least in part by the taxes collected here, that may pay for some of the permit or impact fees or expediting permitting process to help those that need a little assistance with the development, the taxes encouraging them to develop a property. Let's see if we might be able to help them. So that's something we like, wanna get some input from you all. Let's go to the next slide. This is similar, there's, there's at least one nonprofit in the city that purchases property, maintains and fixes them up, and then sells them. They, they, they're in the, the business essentially, it's a nonprofit, but in the business of improving properties, which is consistent with the mission and goal of this tax. And so in that case, we wanted to have a, 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 some sort of relief from that tax. It would be a, a disincentive for them to buy a property that was, um, was blighted and maybe vacant, and have to pay the tax, that's an additional financial burden, which would run counter to the goal of, of, of getting this nonprofit, helping them to improve property. So that's something we wanted some input from you all. And then let's go to the next slide. So the tax rate, um, certainly, these were the, the numbers that we used for the survey, they were well-supported. They generated the revenue that we talked about. They're consistent with other vacant property taxes we've seen in the state. That's why we came up with those numbers, recommended to staff. Staff is recommending these numbers to you, we think they're middle of the pack in terms of rate for this type of tax. But we wanted to get input from you on that as well. Let's go to the next slide. A sunset is often, that's the, the street term for it, it's an expiration. Some taxes have expirations, some do not. Our firm generally recommends against them because they end up just, um, requiring some future city employees and staff to have to re-up the tax. Usually the need doesn't go away. We're hoping in this case it's reduced, but there will probably always be a need for some funding in this area. So that, 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 we recommended to staff, and they're recommend, they agreed with it, and they're recommending to you is to not have a sunset, no expiration. A, a, an agency, a city council can always vote, uh, uh, by resolution not to collect a tax. But if you have a hard expiration, that ties your hands in terms of long-term funding. If you do feel like an expiration or a sunset is, um, is warranted, we would encourage you to consider a fairly stout one, a twenty-year sunset. That way, the administrative costs of doing all this could be, could be recouped. Let's go to the next slide. And so, um, um, so I don't know the best, so probably, I'm probably looking for some guidance from city, city manager Curl on this. If we wanna leave these up and go step-by-step through these, essentially, my presentation has concluded. And again, myself and Chris Coulter, my colleague, as well as others, are ready to answer any questions. But really, we'd like to take input from you. So how, whatever is the best way to do that.
Mayor Bet, through you as the chair, we, we defer to you in terms of, of how to proceed. It would be helpful for staff to have some, some direction, um, so we can come back to you on the first, but I also wanna be thoughtful about time.
Well, my thought, I mean, my first thought is that, that, you know, this is a, these are a whole lot of individual items. You're looking for guidance from the council on, and, and I don't know how you're gonna get guidance unless we go through and vote on every one of them. I mean, this could go on for hours.
Well, if it would be helpful, Lena, do you want, um, to take a, a pass at summarizing, um, where we're planning to, to move forward? And then if the council has any concern with that, they, they can let us know, how about that?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that would work. I think the, the two key items, we need some very specific direction is the special tax versus a general tax. And then are we aiming for the June seventh ballot? If it's gonna be later in November, then we have additional time to come back to you. But if the target is June seventh, we have to come back in a week. And if there's anything that gives anybody significant heartburn, if not, we can go with staff's recommendations as John described.
Right, and the reason why we're proposing the June seventh date, um, to move forward is because we do not yet have a clear picture of how, um, the city's revenue is what we're expecting. And so we, we think it's important for us, given the concerns we're receiving from the community around blight and around trash and the need for further, uh, abatement activities, that, that, that we think that there may be, there's clearly community support for this potentially. And so we would like to move forward expeditiously in June. And if the council is so inclined thereafter, you may consider other things in November. So we don't wanna pile too many things on at one time and, and wanna move forward in an incremental manner.
Well, I'm in, I'm inclined for you maybe to summarize staff recommendations, and then see if, you know, see if people take issue with any of them. That might be the quickest way to try to get where we wanna go. You know, we have several questions, we have, we have four council members with their hands up. But may, maybe to expedite this, you could run through each one of these and tell us what the staff recommendation is. And then if people disagree with that, we can talk about it.
Okay, so the, the, the first item, Mayor Bet, A, staff at this juncture with having, without having feedback from the council is recommending a special tax earmarked for special, specific categories on the June seventh, twenty twenty-two ballot. We think it's important to have exemptions for very low-income owners, low-income local senior owners, active development or active construction, owners that have submitted substantially completed applications, those who are, who are facing financial hardship, and the other three categories noted below. Next slide, please. In addition, we want to ensure that, um, that there is clear, um, that there's an opportunity to pay for permits or impact speeds and expedited permit processing. We want to ensure that nonprofits, uh, have an opportunity to sub, submit applications. And we also wanna have a, a tiered tax, so three thousand to eight thousand dollars with an annual CPI index, probably the San Francisco CPI, um, annually, uh, not to exceed three percent. And, um, we have not included a sunset provision, and those are the, the remaining attributes at this time.
Okay, well, that's very helpful. We now have a, a framework, so let's go to council members, uh, Councilman Jimenez, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I have one question and then two comments. I think, uh, I just wanted to make sure when you said, uh, that, uh, people can present hardships, is, is this is, um, how will this affect people who own a property and don't have the capital to do major repairs? Uh, especially black homeowners who own a property but don't have other wealth or, or their communities? And this is important because we don't want to make the racial wealth gap worse. So is, is that included in what you are talking about, like people can provide hardship?
Lena, is the program that, um, Janae operates, would that be an applicable program potentially for those seniors? To help with home repairs?
Well, we have very limited funding in the, uh, home improvement loan program, which we usually do one to three percent loans. But since the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, we don't have a lot of funding, but that could be additional program that's funded. However, if it's an occupied property, as long as the property is being generally maintained and it's not vacant, and it's, then it wouldn't be taxed. Now, if somebody owns a vacant property and they're not maintaining it, and it's becoming a source of blight, then that's maybe an incentive, and they're being charged the tax, it may be an incentive for them to sell.
So, Councilmember Jimenez, what I would say is that with council direction, we could use some of the proceeds for this, uh, and/or explore as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget to, um, augment the home improvement loan program, to make it accessible potentially to a broader pool of applicants, um, and target, um, long-term Richmond residents, um, as the, the participants.
Okay, thank you. I feel like, yeah, thank you for that, I think the sections are good. I am just really, like, a little concerned about, uh, a special tax, which we, as the consultants say, we'll need the third vote to put it on June seventh. And we know that the city cannot do the campaign, right? So it will need to have, uh, a support of a coalition, um, and support of, uh, the union. So I, I just want to make sure that when we put this on the ballot, that, um, everybody is ready, um, to make sure that this passed. So I, I don't know if June seventh, putting on the ballot too soon, will allow for that, um, campaign to be ready and, and to do that, uh, because the city cannot do that, that part. So, uh, I just wondering, uh, what your thoughts about my concerns?
I, I think that's a, a valid concern. You know, the city's role is to provide information, so I certainly think that's a valid concern. There, we have, uh, made information available throughout this, this process, and to the extent feasible, and we wanna make sure that the process is transparent and all interested parties have information. And so far, I think recently we received a Public Records Act request, but so far, I personally haven't received any information indicating that there is significant concern or people that are unsupported. But, and, um, there appears to be, uh, uh, an interest in moving this forward, given, um, the state of the built environment in the community. But I think if the council wanted to go with the general tax, um, and not have specific earmarks, we can certainly come back with, uh, that information. John, do you have any concerns particularly with moving towards a general tax without specific earmarks and categories for funding expenditure?
Thank you for the opportunity, and, and. Thank you for the opportunity and, and thank you, council member. That's a good, that's a very important question that, that you all need to be comfortable with the ability to put out some, um, some community information by June seventh. So, so I think that's exactly right. I do have some concerns about the general tax for a couple of reasons. One is as we, as we analyze that survey, um, we, there was really a strong preference to link the tax with those services. So that was there. A general tax is a lower threshold politically, and it can only happen at uh a, a general election, not a primary. So it would, if, if you all, if the, if the council tonight gives direction to staff um on looking at the general election, we'll want to, um, we'll want to gather and, and um give it some thought and come back and, and bring that to you. But our, our, our recommendation to staff and to you tonight is to look more closely at that special tax. That seems to be the preference of the community.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted to make sure that I am not saying uh that we should do the general um rather than the special. Um, it's just that uh, one, the, the special tax needs um some higher threshold.
Yeah.
And my, my consideration is about whether we will have the time to do the education that is needed to pass that on June seventh, or whether uh we will need more time so that uh we do the, the education that is needed and put it on November ballot. That is my, my point here. And that is one of the consideration. I know that it's important. We need to have some revenue. Um, but also we want this to pass. Because if we put it on Ju- Ju- June seventh and it doesn't pass, what we are going to do, right? Um, so I just want to make sure that we keep all the options open so that um even though uh you say that is high, if uh maybe um, uh, we, we want, I, I just want to be safe in that way, in that regard, and allow um, the campaign to be ready. Thank you.
If, if I may, I gave some wrong information a moment ago and I want to clarify it. Um, I misspoke. With, because this is a tax on a parcel, whether it's a general tax or a special tax, both are the same threshold, that two-thirds. So for a, so that's a, even a stronger argument that it's the preference of the community to go with the special tax. You don't get the advantage of a lower rate, lower threshold for a general tax, because this is a parcel tax. So I apologize for that. I just wanted to clear that up.
Okay, thank you.
So that's not an option?
So a, a, a general tax is an option, but it doesn't bring with it, in this case, the advantage of a lower threshold. The threshold, the voter approval threshold for a general tax and a special tax, based on parcels like this is, is both two-thirds by statute.
Well, why, if, if that's true, why, why would we want to do it as a, as a general tax?
The, the advantage of a general tax is that you have more latitude of use of them funds.
Got you. Okay. Councilmember McLaughlin?
I have a, a question about um the timeline for implementation of it, if it passes. Um, so if it pass, if we do um a, uh, general, a special tax on June seventh, let's say. Um, you were saying that it would not go into effect until the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year? Is that correct? And it seems like an awful long time. Uh, did I hear that right or what?
You know, I'm going to defer. My colleague, Chris Coulter, is on the line, and he can kind of um talk through that uh um to make sure that we give you the accurate information. Chris, can you kind of explain the, the philosophy of the timing?
Yes, thank you, John. Uh, this is Chris Coulter at SCI. Um, and just to, to recap the question, the question is about the timeline uh for the imposition of the tax. And so essentially, um, the tax were approved by voters in June of this year, twenty twenty-two. There would be um about a six-month period for property owners to become aware of the tax. Potentially get their parcels out of uh uh uncompliance status, get their parcels into use. And then um the thirty-day in-use threshold would apply to that twenty twenty-three calendar year for them to be in use. At which point, after the full duration of the calendar year twenty twenty-three, part, the property owners would be notified in twenty twenty-four about their potential tax liability with this. And then um later that year, in twenty twenty-four, in October, that those parcels would potentially appear uh, would be included with the vacant property tax on their property tax bill.
What is the twenty twenty-three year for? I heard when you said that they kind of get educated throughout the rest of twenty twenty-two. What happens during calendar year twenty twenty-three?
Uh, so during twenty twenty-three, essentially, it's our reference period for a property owner to use their property for at least thirty days in the year. And so if somebody was using that for a month during twenty twenty-three, that would be
That's like the evaluation period.
I see, I see. Okay, thanks for explaining that. Um, so another question, as we had a vacancy tax on the ballot in the past, it did not pass. Um, does anyone, and I don't know if the consultants know this or city staff have this, what was the, um, was it a special or general tax? And what was the outcome, um, the percentage of, of votes that it received?
You know, I, I, I'll tell you what, I'm going to answer that because I just looked it up. So um, I, I authored that measure and I essentially copied the Oakland measure that was going on the ballot at the same time. It was November of twenty eighteen. And uh, our, our measure got fifty, it got fifty-nine percent of the vote. And I think, I think that if it had had a campaign, it would have passed. Um, and I, you know, I begged the unions to uh help finance a campaign and they just blew me off. But I think if we'd had a decent campaign, it would have passed. I mean, you know, we were only six or seven points away from it. Uh, but it, it was, it, you know, it, it was a two-thirds uh, two-thirds item.
So my thought is that, um, this is just my comment. I like all the exemptions and I, I really would, I understand the issue of, of being concerned if it's going to pass or not and if there's enough time for June seventh. But I really think that um getting this passed as soon as possible is the best outcome, both in terms of bringing in more revenue as soon as possible, but also in terms of uh cleaning the city up. Um, I do understand the issue, though, of making sure we have a campaign. So if we heard the, I'm, first of all, what can the city do? Can, can the city send out an informational mailer? Um, the city should be able to do something. I realize it can't campaign for it, but can we send out an informational mailer, something like that?
Yes, that's what we've done in the past. Um, we've, with um prior, I think there was a sales tax increase a while back, uh, twenty sixteen, I believe, when the city was heavily involved with some sort of, with um, just providing voter outreach to provide information on the, on the ballot measure.
Okay.
I think, uh, Councilmember McLaughlin, uh, you absolutely can uh conduct educational campaigns, okay? So that means the materials you put out have to have uh information on both sides of the question. Uh, but the city can uh put that campaign. It's not only mailers. Uh, you um can have items on your agenda that uh provide education. Uh, newsletters, the city has newsletters. You can put articles in your newsletter. So there, uh, there's, there's a number of things that can be done. Um, but the issue is that uh you, you need to norm. I don't know whether uh the consultant here does those educational campaigns, but uh it takes some lead time to put together uh at a, a directed and um appropriately balanced uh campaign. It's not something you just kind of
Yeah, um, yeah, I understand that. So I guess since we don't have to um make a decision necessarily, we're giving input tonight. I would certainly, gosh, all this echo. Um, I would certainly like to hear from um the unions, which have been in support of a vacancy tax to see if they have some, um, you know, what their thoughts are about, you know, helping out in this regard. But I guess we would have to know this by March first, if we were going to put it on the June seventh ballot. Is that correct?
Yes, we're trying to mitigate needing a special meeting uh in early March. Um, so if the council would like, we can, we can move forward with the staff recommendations um as we continue to hear comments this evening, and then we could come back on March first. And um in between that time, staff can certainly be available for questions and to provide status updates.
Okay, thanks. Um, at this point, that's what sounds best to me, but I want to hear from the other council members as well.
Councilmember Johnson?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, actually, my question is kind of built on what Councilmember Jimenez was asking, and I'll start with the exemptions. Um, and this is a clarify, a question that I need you to clarify this for me. Um, if there is an, an older individual or someone with a second home that they're looking to sell, um, are you saying that as long as they make sure that the property is well-kept and there's no blight, that they, that they fall into these exemptions? Or um, you know, like, where, like, where do they fall in this, you know, in this scenario?
So let me, let me dive in and then Chris can help me out. It's a good question. I want to be clear um on the, who's subject to the tax.
Right.
Councilmember Johnson, if, if the, if it's a vacant lot, raw ground, it's subject to the tax, whether it's blighted or not.
Got you.
If it's a single-family home, like a second home, they were, they had, if it's not blighted, if it's well-maintained, then it's not subject to the tax. So I think the example you had, if it was a, a couple uh 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 um that had a second house that they were going to sell and in the next couple of years, and they didn't want to pay the tax for a couple of years, as well as, is, it's not, as well as it's, as long as it's not blighted, then they wouldn't be subject to the tax.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, John. And I guess I'll just weigh in um on A and B really quickly. I do um, I do see the benefits of having a general tax, but I do believe the special tax may be the best route. Um, because as my colleagues can tell you, like, we get a bunch of calls and emails about the, the look at the city. And Councilmember Bates was just talking about that with Ms. um, with Ms. Doria Robertson. And so, you know, I think this is like having a, a special revenue stream to, to make sure that our city um reflects how we feel about it is, is very important. Now, what I am extremely apprehensive about is this June seventh date. Um, I feel like I would be a little bit more, a little less anxious about us trying to pass a, a, a tax measure um during a primary election. Um, if I actually knew we had a campaign plan, um, you know, James Attencio got on and said that we send out mailers, and then Dave Alshar got on and said that we can do a little bit more. Um, Tom got on and said that this failed in twenty eighteen due to lack of support from certain organizations. Before I can feel comfortable with June seventh, I would like to know that staff has reached out to um these coalitions and the unions to see if we could actually launch a real campaign, because it would be really sad for us to have a repeat of twenty eighteen just because we was rushing, we, we, we were rushing and, you know, just trying to hurry up and make some money. I'd rather us take our time, do it right, and get, and, and get all of the votes that we need, get the two-thirds majority, than come up short in June, just because we wanted to hurry up and get something on the ballot. Um, I know Richmond voters kind of well, um. And June seventh requires a lot of education and a lot of outreach. And if we don't have a real campaign plan, I see this literally falling on the floor and all it is hard work. Um, being for nothing. So as of right now, I'm not for the June seventh date. I would say that we should go with the, um, with the general, with the, with the date in November, with the November eighth date, although that is my birthday, I think we should still go with it. Um, and yeah, just because it gives us more time to really get the communities um to buy in. Um, you know, even with those surveys that we conduct, I know, like, those surveys only go to certain community members. Um, or actually, I take that back, only certain community members will send those back in. Um, and so what we need is like, we need more than just those individuals who are willing to submit a survey to vote on June seventh. And so with that, I'd like to see a real campaign plan or, you know, some type of real like action plan for this, if we are to put it on the ballot, because it's, it's a great measure with a lot of hard work put into it. And I'm really fearful of the fact that on June seventh, it's literally going to fall, is, is going to fail. Because, because it's not, there isn't any time and there isn't any real campaign put together behind it. And if we're expecting people to just come out on June seventh, you know, with little to no information and just say, hey, this is going to help fix blight in the city of Richmond, that's not enough. And, and, and those one-off mailers and one-off impressions that we're doing with voters will not be enough either.
Okay, uh, let's see, uh, uh, Vice, uh, Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I believe it should be a special tax. I also think it should uh happen in November. Uh, voter turnout in primaries are not as large as they are in, in the uh November election. And um, I think we have the image of, of trying to pass as many taxes as quick as possible by the general public. And by, by rushing this uh and having it on the June election, it would uh feed into that perception. So I think it's important that we uh uh ease up on it, do a proper educational program. And uh, we have to, we have to remember, uh, June is only ninety days away, which isn't much time to, to uh, uh, plan a, a cohesive uh, uh, educational strategy. So um, I, I really, and, and, and I, I do believe that a tax like this should have the largest voter turnout possible uh so that, so that we can actually say that a, a majority of Richmond citizens voted for this.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, and, and I actually had, had a couple of more questions. Um, in terms of um, um, of, of, of the uh tax, uh, if, if the tax is in arrears and they, and the person wants to sell the property, how is that handled?
So I can dive in. It, it would be the hand, it's handled in the way that any property is hand, any property that has unpaid taxes is handled and handled by the county. Unpaid taxes on a um, on a property essentially are summed. And when the property changes hands, those back taxes have to be paid. They can put a lien on the property as well, but there's nothing different about a vacant property tax in terms of how it's handled by the county, um, if it's in arrears. It's just like any other property, unpaid property tax.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Willis?
Um, I know Councilmember Bates had his hand up way before me. I defer to him, if that's okay with you.
Who?
Bates had his hands up way before I did, so I defer to him, if that's okay.
I don't even see Bates on the screen anymore. That's, that's why I called on you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I guess, um, I'm just trying to be considerate. I guess, uh, you know, potential dumb question uh is uh, because I had the same kind of reticence just thinking about June seventh, because that's literally right around the corner. Dumb question, if it failed on June seventh, is there any way it can make it to the general election? If we already had the language together, or that's just a no-go?
Uh, let, let me try to respond to that and if there's others, technically, it can make it. So if I, it, it, because the due date for the November is usually the first or second week in August. However, and this is a big however, it's not something our firm has seen or we would, would recommend. We would, we would be fearful that there is a real pushback by the public of trying a tax again that a tax again that soon. We don't know that that's happened. We don't know that it's happened successfully, and we would have some real concerns. But on, on that issue of, of outreach, if I may, um, as taxes like these up and down the state, there's kind of been an evolution of, of outreach. And it used to be rely on a, a committee, an advocacy group, um, not associated or funded by the city to get information out. There's been a change over the years, and more and more, um, public agencies are able to very effectively tell the story in a non-advocacy way, a balanced way, as the two attorneys um correctly pointed out. And so, eh, whether you go in, it decide to go in June or November, a big portion of the work will be non-advocacy information. A tax like this, um, the facts kind of tell the story very, very effectively. Um, we, we've been interacting with the city already, talking to them about what type of non-advocacy um campaign could be most effective. And we do believe it could be done, um, uh, uh, that we're poised and ready to do it. In fact, we've already been planning if you go forward with the June. There's another, lots of considerations, but I just want you to know that part of it. I can't speak to the interaction with the unions. I'm not aware of that. Maybe someone else can. But I can speak to the fact that a, a, a well-planned, effective um, community education effort, which we think is very effective, um, can, could be done very effectively and make that June date.
Uh, Councilmember Bates.
Oh, thank you. Um.
It's out there, I'll just.
I'm probably the only one that's not enthused about this tax. And I'll tell you why. I haven't heard of the parcels that are being subject to this new tax. How much taxes are they paying currently? If you got a 5,000 square foot there, about, how much taxes are, are they currently paying? Are 8,000?
Let, let me, let me try that. And I, I'm shooting a little bit from the hip, but I want to kind of give you a perspective. So let's say there's a typical vacant lot, and the assessed value of that lot is $300,000, something like that. In a residential neighborhood, it's $300,000. They would ta, pay a base tax of 1% or $3,000 a year. But typically in California, that amount is a, another 50 to 90%. So it would probably be when you include the other bond measures, taxes, fees, and charges, that probably net-net that $300,000 typical vacant lot may be paying four, five, almost $6,000 in taxes. In this case, it would be an additional 3,000. So it's a heavy lift. I don't want to sugarcoat it. But just to give you a sense of perspective, they may be paying four or 5,000 today, and it would, in addition to that, be 3,000, if that's helpful.
Well, let me just share my viewpoint. I know there are some people that own property that do not take care of it. But there are a lot of people that do maintain their property. Secondary, the people who own the property are not the ones who are throwing garbage and, uh, and filling these empty lots full of trash. It's other citizens throughout the state, state. So the question, why should I, if I own property, I do my best to maintain it, why should I pay taxes for someone else who is coming in and dumping? And even though maybe I go out and I clean it up, there's no uh incentive, if you're gonna put a tax on a person, there's no incentive for them to go and clean their own property up. So it just sits there. So I can assure you, I'm not enthused about, uh, and I, I think people who uh, uh, want to put this tax on, they don't have property, they don't own property. I don't, I don't own any lots in this city. I don't think any council member owned any lot. So, hey, put it on the people who may not be a resident of this city, uh, put the fee on them. And I think that's grossly unfair.
Okay, everybody's had a shot at this. I've got a quick question. Um, I, I, I think when I looked at the Oakland ordinance back four years ago, um, it had, it had another exemption in there for agricultural use, urban agriculture. Is that something you looked at?
Chris, why don't you respond to that? You're most familiar with that.
The what?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, the, uh, urban agriculture would fall into an in-use category. So that if, if the, if the parcel's being used for urban ag for 30 days during the year, that would count as in-use and not subject to the tax.
Okay. Um, well, I'm trying to sum this up and move on. It, it, it sounds to me like a majority of council members want to go for Oak, I mean, want to go for November instead of June. Um, you know, I, I think the key to this is a campaign. I, I heard somebody suggest that the, that, that staff should go talk to unions, and you know, you can't do that kind of thing. If, 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 if this is gonna go, there's gonna have to be an advocacy committee, uh, you know, who's gonna have to go out and solicit some money. I'm not, I'm not too enthusiastic about, about staff putting together a campaign and calling it an information uh dissemination effort. You know, uh, agencies get sued for this kind of thing all the time. And, you know, they don't necessarily lose, but, but it has delayed, it delays uh, uh, implementation, costs money, that kind of thing. So I, I think I would be uh supportive of moving it on to November. And during that period of time, working on putting together an advocacy group and trying to raise some out, outside money uh, you know, for a campaign. Again, uh, our experience in 2018, you know, Oak, Oakland passed it, and Richmond didn't. And, but we came close. And I, I think frankly, the difference is no campaign. So I don't, I don't know whether we want to vote. I think what I'm hearing is that everybody here supports the staff recommendations except doing it in November. And, well, I'm not saying everybody. Uh, Councilmember Bates doesn't support it at all. But, but I, I think the majority of the council members uh support the staff recommendations, but to do it in November instead of June. Uh, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, I think, um, one thing is that we will, like, the staff will have to come March 1st, um, and we will have to make the decision. So I, I would like to kind of like make it open, because, yeah, even though it's, it's, it's sure, um, I believe if um, we can have the support, um, that might be a possibility. So to, to put it on, on, on the June ballot. Um, but we will need um, to make sure that that support is there. So I think for, for me, it would be good, like, on March 1st, that we have these two auctions opened, and then um, see, um, and discuss it there and see if we um, get, uh, the support, the campaign running.
So, so you're, you're suggesting move all the staff recommendations, but come back on March 1st to revisit the, the date of it? Is that right?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's certainly doable. Um, are there still items people want to talk about, or can we go to public speakers and move this on?
Well, I, I want to make one other comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
There's no sunset clause in this. I think a more incentive way to proceed with trying to increase, uh, get these properties developed is doing an incentive to have, contact all these developers and have them, not the developers, the home lot owners, and encourage them to, you know, sell the property or develop it. Uh, with, then we get a nice tax uh benefit when a house is built on the property. But you're gonna have too many exemptions with low-income people who don't, who are not gonna qualify. How are they gonna get exempted? And I'm afraid that, two things. One, you're not gonna get the revenue you think you're gonna get. And second, if you put in, you don't put in a sunset clause, once all these lots, perhaps may, may 56% of them are developed, then you just put money into the treasury of the city. And I don't think that was the intent, or should be the intent of this council. You gotta have a sunset clause in there. When these lots are built, then these people start, stop getting taxed. So those is my observations. Thank you.
Okay, uh, does anybody object? If we go ahead to public speakers? Okay, Madam Clerk, you got any?
Yes, we do.
We have two speakers. I have Lisa Johnson and Naomi Williams. Lisa Johnson, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. When the city council and public received the long-term financial forecast on July 27th, several options were provided for consideration to address the city's financial needs. Two slides discussed yet more tax options, including possible amounts received. You also received six slides of options to control the city's expenditures. The only proposals that city staff is proposing yet again is more taxes. When are we going to hear you propose addressing the unsustainable employee costs? Because you cannot tax your way out of this crisis. There is only one city in the US that has passed this tax, Oakland. What the consultant is not bringing to everyone's attention is that Richmond just passed the gross receipts business tax, giving us the most expensive sales tax structure in the entire Bay Area. Oakland has not passed that tax. We're in the middle of a pandemic with many small businesses suffering, that is further compounded with a 7% increase in inflation in 2021 alone. Please explain to the public how you really realistically think you're going to retain, let alone attract, property owners and landlords and businesses to Richmond. When you are taxing them at the highest business rates, you now are telling those property owners who can't find business tenants for mixed-use properties because of the current economic client, climate, that you're going to punish them further by slapping an additional vacant property tax on them. Now consider housing providers, many of whom have not collected rent for two years, and there is still no path forward for them to collect that money if their tenant refuses to apply for assistance and/or doesn't qualify. How many of you on this council own property and have seen a Richmond property tax bill? We have 26 unique taxes, 26. And you're proposing slapping an additional 3K or more to some of those tax bills. It's unconscionable.
Thank you. Next speaker is Naomi Williams. Naomi, you'll have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Good evening. I agree with Bates and Lisa about the time, the sunset clause and all of that, but I won't vote on either, because the last time we had the measure, we were told that it was gonna be used for what we were thinking it was being put in for. But the money went to the general funds. And the item that was done, I think it was for the streets and stuff, was never finished. We still have streets with holes in it and all of that. So whichever way you want to go, I'm voting no on both.
Thank you. There are no more public speakers.
So this is an action item. Uh, the recommended action is to um, pro, provide direction, which I think we've done, and also approve a contract amendment with SCI Consulting Group uh to increase the payment limit by $46,500. So we do need a motion if we're gonna do that.
Inappropriate.
Did I ask what the, what's the purpose of it? Who, who we are paying to do what?
Some staff want to respond to that?
We're paying a consultant to do what?
Yes, um, so for uh, phase three, we would be paying um SCI Consulting, who's already been helping us with phase one and two. And specifically, phase three would provide special tax election services, so could help us with some of the educational materials that are needed, as well as providing some uh implementation guidance uh for the tax.
Well, to our city attorney, is that, is that a legal tax obligation that taxpayers can pay for a consultant to tax themselves?
There, uh, we actually would, are paying for the, this consultant to put together this election measure and possibly an educational campaign. So it's uh just as legal as all the other things the city spends money on.
Well, I question that, but you probably got the votes.
It's just as legal as all the other illegal things the city does.
I think you're misphrasing me. I'm being misquoted.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
And, um.
Martinez.
And this is also, can I make a correction?
I had my hand up. I have a question. Um, uh, this is, this is to, to have, uh, the consultant prepare um a, a measure for, for us to vote on. Um, so my question is, how does moving it to the November election affect the contract?
Uh, I think we've accommodated for the term, the cost would stay the same. I mean, right now, it's more the urgency of the timing of getting the work started. If June is the target date, or if you at least want to have the option to consider June, if it's November, we can come back and, in a month or so, uh, with that contract.
For the good of the order, can you put up the recommended action language, just so everyone can see it and to help, uh, the clerk and also to help um, make sure that everyone understands the item before us this evening for consideration?
Uh, but could I add, within the scope of services, is an educational camp, when you just said election services. So obviously, that's preparing the ballot measures and so forth. But does that, is, is part of the money uh in that budget include uh an educational campaign? Or would that, would that end up being a separate additional item?
Chris, do you have more um specifics on the, the tasks under phase three?
Uh, ye, yes, Lena. So phase three does include some educational outreach uh components. Um, so, so that would essentially would be included with phase three.
How, how, what is the amount budgeted for that? I, I, I perceive that various members of the council think a, a fairly rigorous educational campaign is needed. Uh, how much of your budget is for that?
Um, there's $26,500 for informational outreach services. Um, the, the tasks are included in the scope of work. Um, on page three of the scope of work, um, it lists task one, data analysis, tax structure and documents, 18,500. Special tax, election county, it has an asterisk because those, there are some unknown variables at this time. Task three, information outreach services, 26,500. Incidental costs, 1,500. Total not to exceed 46,500.
The, the 26,000 for community outreach includes the, the design and development of a non-advocacy community outreach. So development of frequently asked questions, um, best way to uh, address the uh, art to educate, the, the methods, the processes, a, a complete plan and the substance. What it doesn't include is, for example, the costs of a mailer. So it's, it's the thought, it's the design, it's the, the way to communicate, the most effective tools and, and methods to communicate. But it doesn't include hard costs like printing and mailing if the city wanted to go out for a mail or something like that. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, my, my experience, that's a fairly minimal amount for that purpose.
So what normally happens in the past is city staff contract directly with um a service that assists with the mailing. So that way that the city um pays for those, uh, for the bulk mailing. Um, they, they do a solicitation and get a quote for bulk ma, mailing to um procure those services for, around education of any um sort of educational campaign at the, the best uh rate possible. And those are, are usually done um in collaboration with the department and the finance team, and that would be what would happen here as well.
Well, a citywide mailing is gonna cost 10 to 20,000 dollars.
Understood. So we're, we're happy to bring that back, those expenditures. Understood. So we're we're happy to bring that back, those expenditures um when we have those costs.
Okay.
Eighty ten thousand dollars.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that um we allocate the money, which is up to, i- it sounds like forty-six thousand um something. It's not the whole amount necessarily, but um, is that what it is?
Forty-six thousand five hundred?
Forty-six thousand five hundred. It's not to exceed forty-six thousand. That's how I read it. So the motion would be to um to move that we ex- we extend the contract not to exceed forty-six thousand five hundred and come back on March first with options um for either putting it on June first, provided we have support for a campaign or um consider putting it on the November ballot.
Okay.
Wait for a second.
I second that.
Okay, second by half minutes. Uh, call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Okay, there's also a part in this um recommended action to appropriate the funds. Are you including that part also?
I
Appropriate the funds for the contract?
Yeah, not to exceed.
Right, okay, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget. Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Bates?
No.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
And Mayor Butt?
Yes.
The motion passes with Councilmember Bates voting no.
Okay, the uh, I think what I'll do is uh is the 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 next item is um oh, three, I think I'll continue it to next time so we can get on with State of the City. So why don't you go ahead and read State of the City and we'll work on the logistics of getting that uh getting that going.
Item P one is the state of the city addresses to receive a presentation by Mayor Tom Butt of the annual state of the city.
So give us a minute. We've got to do some screen sharing and such.
Fifty-eight seconds, Tom.
Hey, Tom, I think I wanna take a nap. Let me know when you finish.
Okay, I'll call you up.
I thought you was cooking back there, Councilmember Bates.
How how you doing, Ruben? Can you hear me? Are you uh working on getting that up?
Mayor Butt, um, is there assistance? Um, is?
There comes. Okay, it looks like uh it looks like we're ready to go, so uh I'm just gonna jump right into it. Uh, good evening, everybody, and uh welcome to the two thousand twenty-two uh State of the City presentation. The city charter states that the mayor shall make an annual report to the city council as to the conditions and affairs of the city. This will be my eighth and last report. After nearly twenty-seven years on the city council, eight as mayor, I am turned out and will leave office January of two thousand twenty-three. A huge thank you goes out to the I.T. Department and K.C.R.T. for their crucial help in handling the technical side of the city's various virtual meetings through COVID, as well as capturing the true beauty of Richmond through various photos and videos. I also want to thank my former chief of staff, Christopher Whitmore, who served in that role from September twenty nineteen to October of two thousand twenty-one, after previously working in my office in a different capacity years prior. Chris has moved on to serve as the executive director of the Richmond Promise, a favorite organization of mine, of whose continued growth and progress I look forward to seeing under his leadership. After his departure, I wanted to clone him, but I did the next best thing. I replaced him with his dad. Vernon Whitmore is no stranger to the city hall and brings a vast amount of knowledge to the city through his previous work in media, journalism and public affairs. He's already ramped up our grantsmanship ability. With Vernon me in the office, we now have two Vietnam veterans represented. He is joined by longtime staffers, Ruben and Dominique, all three of which are more than ready to continue serving Richmond residents in my final year in office. The mayor's office is a mystery to some, but with a small staff of only three, we cover a lot of ground. They assist me with legislative and policy initiatives, board commission and committee appointments, community outreach, letters of support, proclamations, applications and more. As of late last year, Dominique also staffs the Community Police Review Commission. A major aspect of office work comes from responding to various concerns from community members and businesses via phone calls, emails, letters and social media messages, as well as in-person visits that are starting to pick up again. Some weeks, my staff logs as much as thirty collective hours of responding to phone calls. Constituents contact my office, often after frustration with slow response times from other city departments because of COVID. Sometimes people criticize me for taking political positions, but the charter defines the office of mayor as a political position. Specifically, quote, "responsible for providing civic leadership and taking issues to the people and marshaling public interests and support for municipal activity." "The mayor shall be concerned with the general development of the community and the general level of city services and activity programs, and may develop and inform city residents of policies and programs which he or she believes are necessary for the welfare of the city," unquote. In addition to presiding over city council meetings, I sign all contracts over ten thousand dollars and appoint community members to various boards, commissions and committees. Having a great staff allows me the time to represent Richmond and Richmond's interests on regional boards and commissions. I spend about fif- ten to fifteen hours a week in these meetings. About six to ten hours a week, meeting with constituents and prospective businesses and developers. And about six hours a week in city council meetings. During the remainder of my time, I work on special projects like the Housing First Initiative with the Richmond Rotary Club. I also have weekly meetings with my staff and frequent meetings with the city manager and other city staff. One of the most important aspects of city governance is getting the message out to the general public. My office constantly shares city information on our social media platforms, including city updates, community events and resources, local and state and national initiatives, news articles, press releases and spotlights of local business and community members. Our Next Door account alone reaches over thirty-one thousand households. Since this is my last State of the City presentation, please indulge me to look back at some of our
You're muted, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I'll start over again. Since this is my last State of the City presentation, please indulge me to look back at some of our accomplishments over the past twenty-seven years, during which Richmond grew by twenty-five percent and Richmond became the most diverse city in America, with the Latino population becoming the largest ethnic group. Hoping to bring Rosie the River to Richmond and preserving our history and buildings such as the Civic Center, the Ford Building and the Maritime Center has been very important to me. Negotiating the thirty-five million dollar Richmond Promise Scholarship Program for graduating seniors was an opportunity to boost the future of our young people. Implementing more quiet zones than any city in California has improved the sleep of thousands. Joining M.C.E. and adopting sustainable policies like the General Plan twenty thirty and our Climate Action Plan has made Richmond a climate leader. A high point was representing Richmond at the COP twenty-one Paris Agreement. Fighting for the nearly six thousand homes, including hundreds of affordable homes that Point Malati and Campus Bay will provide, will make Richmond a better place. We live in an interconnected metropolitan area of seven point seven million people, not in a bubble, and participating in multiple regional agencies and working together with other elected officials has proved to be a boon for Richmond. Twenty twenty-one continued to be dominated by news and events shaped by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, which has been ongoing now for two years. Controversial highlights include top leadership transitions, disputes between council members and myself, including nearly three hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars being spent investigating and suing me. Over one hundred vacant and fully funded city positions. The defunding of the Richmond Police Department as recommended by the Reimagining Public Safety Community Task Force and the advancement of two contentious projects, Point Malati and Campus Bay. Positive highlights include major park grants, popular reopenings of Richmond establishments, the one-hundredth birthday celebration of Betty Reed Soskin, and Richmond being ranked as the most diverse city in America. I'm proud to rec- to recognize Richmond's sixteen-year-old Elisa Lu, already a national champion who took eighth place at the Beijing Olympics. Richmond proud. Richmond leadership transitions made for a challenging year in two thousand twenty-one. City manager Laura Snideman was terminated. City attorney Teresa Stricker resigned, and Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd accepted a job offer as Fire Chief for the city of Redmond, Washington. Former assistant city manager Shossa Curl was appointed to serve as interim city manager. Dave Alshar was ser- was hired to serve as interim city attorney. And Angel Montoya was hired as our permanent fire chief. His most recent experience was that as deputy fire chief for Los Angeles County. With the release of data gathered from the two thousand twenty census, it is time again for city council redistricting. The process has been complicated and highly contentious as residents fight for their favorite map. A third post-draft hearing is currently scheduled for March twenty-second during the regularly scheduled Richmond City Council meeting. With a deadline of April seventeenth, residents will continue to deliberate in the weeks to come. The outcome of this process will affect the November eighth general election as city council districts two, three and four are on the ballot, along with the position of mayor. Although COVID-nineteen may seem to be in the rearview mirror for some of us, and Richmond has a high vaccination rate, people in Richmond continue to die from it every week, just nine this past week. Nine just this past week. These numbers represent all cases and deaths throughout the duration of the pandemic. The Richmond Rapid Response Fund was a response to COVID that provided funding and resources to people affected by the pandemic. The mission is now being reexamined, including looking at experimenting with guaranteed minimum income programs. After a decade of sometimes dramatic improvement, the two thousand twenty-one annual survey found significant recent declines in residents' perceptions of Richmond's quality of life and Richmond as a place to live. Some attributed to COVID-nineteen, others to politics. I am, however, optimistic that we will reverse that trend and rise to residents' expectations for a city that more than meets their needs. Transparency suffered during two thousand twenty-one as the former city manager and former city attorney continued strategies to keep critical information away from the public. Due to the pandemic and other factors, Richmond's budget has been volatile and unpredictable the last couple of years and will continue to be. Forecasting revenue from the gross receipts tax remains a work in progress. We made it through the pandemic without any financial crises that would affect our credit ratings. Thanks to ARPA funding, some big sales that provided high real estate transfer taxes and over a hundred funded but unfilled positions. Diverting millions of dollars to write off old housing authority debts, however, has reduced reserves below recommended levels. At over a hundred ninety million, this fiscal year began with the highest budget in Richmond history. But we will see it even get bigger. The most controversial part was redirecting funding from the police to four other programs. It's really hard to understand how Richmond's property taxes dipped in a year when the value of homes went up fifteen percent. I think the Contra Costa County Assessor has it in for Richmond. We currently have seven hundred and five authorized positions, the lowest in decades. And there are a hundred and thirty vacancies. Having to do more with less is a big challenge, but for the most part, city staff are rising to it. Revenue growth continues, but it's also gobbled up by employer wage increases along with pension and O.P.E.D. increases. At mid-year, the budget grew to a hundred ninety-four million, with changes that result in a reduction of the four point three million set aside Ri- for Richmond's reserve balance. In June of two thousand twenty-one, staff projected an ending reserve balance of fourteen point three percent. However, the four point three million reduction uh that I've already talked about will decrease the reserve balance to twelve point five percent. The big change has been the decision to write off most of the uncollected Richmond Housing Authority debt. Here's where eight million dollar increase is going. It's not a lot compared to eight million dollars, but the city council spent nearly three hundred thousand dollars investigating and suing me with no results. There are numerous challenges, unpredictability being the main one, to stabilize Richmond's financial condition and maintaining our reserve target of fifteen percent. Through today, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the city has collected close to one and a half million in business taxes, but most of it was based on the calculation of the previous ordinance. Measure U-related business tax collected from January first through February sixteenth amounted to about three hundred thousand dollars. The total original estimate was nine point five million, which was subsequently reduced by two million dollars based on the change of the implementation date to January first, two thousand twenty-two, and the first year being a transition year. The amount projected for the first year was subsequently reduced after council adoption of the rent board fees paid as credit toward the tax by small landlords. This corresponds to an additional reduction of one point six million. Projected revenues for fiscal Projected revenues for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two at this point is five point nine million. This projection is based on sales tax numbers. Many businesses' gross receipts are higher than what is reported to the California Department of Tax Administration, primarily because they provide services that are not charged sales tax or wholesale. We will continue to monitor this revenue stream closely, as well as the submission of gross receipt amounts by Richmond businesses as they turn in what we call the data sheets, which are crucial for us to update our estimates. Public safety continues to be the highest concern of residents, based on the twenty twenty-one community survey. Next is the city's financial stability. Despite dealing with COVID nineteen, defunding, and staffing challenges during twenty twenty-one, the Richmond Police Department performed well. There were reductions in all types of crimes. The RPD continues to take guns off the street and regularly handles mental health crises with success, despite claims by the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force that the RPD is incapable of doing so. A year after the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force persuaded the city council to divert funding for mental health crises, no replacement program has been implemented. In twenty twenty, there were approximately eight hundred and sixty-eight calls for service for one thousand residents. There were eight hundred and forty-four calls for services for one thousand residents in twenty twenty-one last year. That's a minus three percent change. DUI checkpoints funded with state grants help take dangerous drivers off the road. Richmond homicide rates have been relatively stable the last few years, but are still way too high. During my eight-year term, the average annual homicide rate has been the lowest in recent record. Alas, my dream of zero homicides during my term as mayor will not happen. We've already had three this year. The Reimagining Public Safety Task Force has been divisive and controversial, redirecting millions of dollars from policing to other programs that could have been funded from other sources such as ARPA. We call it the Fire Department, but most of its work is responding to medical emergencies. Only a little over eleven percent of incidents are fires. Code enforcement remains busy, but is also overwhelmed. It plays a critical role in keeping Richmond safe, healthy, and attractive. Trying to prevent climate change and preparing for its consequences are two of the few initiatives that unites the city council. We have a robust climate action plan, but implementation and tracking has suffered over the last couple of years due to staffing shortages and COVID. The city has a new environmental manager, Samantha Carr, who is facilitating multiple programs that save energy and reduce greenhouse gases, but we're not yet tracking the results. Reducing greenhouse gases by reducing CO2 from natural gas consumption and methane from natural gas leaks and methane-producing garbage and landfills are steps the city took in twenty twenty-one to become more sustainable. Encouraging solar energy, electrical generation is a goal of Richmond's solar automated permit processing, which just went into effect, I believe, in the last month. Dumping in Richmond continues to be a challenge. A typical dump truck can carry about eight tons, so imagine over three hundred and sixty dump trucks carrying away illegally deposited trash from Richmond city streets in twenty twenty-one. There are multiple ways to get rid of a mattress for free, but over three thousand people just throw them into the street. Keeping our city clean is an expensive proposition that never ceases. You can be part of the solution by reporting illegal dumping. Richmond joined MCE in twenty thirteen, and Richmond Rate Paris has saved millions of dollars and prevented vast amounts of greenhouse gases being released. MCE is the highest single contributor to reaching our Climate Action Plan goals. MCE also provides energy-saving grants and services. Yet more than ten percent of Richmond electricity users have opted out of MCE and continue to spend more money for dirtier energy. We need to bring these people into the fold. I continue to serve as chair of the Board of MCE, a public agency that spends half a billion dollars a year providing clean energy to half a million accounts in four counties. Richmond has participated in the much acclaimed AB six seventeen Community Air Monitoring Program, but the product has been disappointing. We have a nifty air quality app, but we still have not been able to identify or quantify specific sources of pollution, which are limited to particulates. I'm not sure if this will actually provide any benefits. One of the things AB six seventeen promised was to measure and identify the source of coal dust pollution, but that never happened. AB six seventeen was offered by industry lobbyists and legislators as a substitute for actual emission controls, but so far it's been a failure. The monitoring project continues, but the end result remains a mystery. The next phase of AB six seventeen implementation is a pollution reduction plan, but there is no data on which to base such a plan and no requirements for implementation. Again, the AB six seventeen effort was limited to particulates, but sources and quantities are not identified. If you want to get involved, however, here is the information. Housing is a big issue in Richmond as it is in most Bay Area cities. Rents are unaffordable to much of our population, and homelessness is not getting any better. Unfortunately, some of the policies adopted improved the situation are doing just the The city of Richmond had to write off more than ten million dollars in uncollected debts, uncollectible debts of the Richmond Housing Authority that have been accumulating for years. The good news, however, is that there is light at the end of the tone. The Richmond Housing Authority has long been an underfunded organization focusing on public housing. To eliminate city subsidies, former public housing projects are being transitioned to private and nonprofit developers and managers that use federal tax credits and operating subsidies from other sources. Once Richmond's most infamous public housing project, the Hacienda, is being rehabilitated and will open later this year. Nevin Plaza and Nystrom Village are following. The last public housing project to be transitioned to the private sector will be Nystrom Village, virtually unchanged since it was built for shipyard workers in World War II. It will be replaced with a denser mixed-use project. No one knows how many unhoused people reside in Richmond, but estimates range from a few hundred to over one thousand. Over half suffer from mental or physical disabilities and drug abuse, all of which are exacerbated by homelessness. Some are very visible at locations such as Ryden Road and the Richmond Parkway at North Castro Street. In twenty twenty-one, there were thirty-four hundred contacts in which services were provided by Coordinated Outreach Referral and Engagement, CORE for short. That's a county agency. Most, ninety-four percent, received emergency supplies like hygiene kits, blankets, foods, et cetera, and more than three-quarters received other services such as soft referrals to service agencies, bus tickets, and transportation. Eleven percent had a placement into emergency shelter directly from CORE Outreach, and eight percent had coordination with healthcare. The city council spent much of the one point five million appropriated to alleviate city homeless problems, but the results are unclear because no data has been provided by the two contractors, Housing Consortium of the East Bay and Rebuilding Together East Bay North. The one point five million could have been used to pay for apartments for over one hundred people for a year. The mayor's office, in collaboration with the Richmond Rotary Club, started a Housing First program that is placing families from Ryden Road and Castro RV camps into furnished apartments for a year. While residential rents are trending upward nationwide, rents in Richmond are trending downward, a three percent decrease from last year. Richmond remains an island of affordability in the Bay Area. The Richmond Rent Program duplicates many state-level regulations. It is supported by landlords that pay nearly three million dollars a year to support its staff and consultants. According to the most recent two-year annual report, the number of rental units in Richmond continues to fall as owners of single-family homes sell out rather than continuing to deal with onerous regulations. This reduction in supply results in rents higher than they would have been at a freer market, just the opposite of the original goal of the rent program. According to Zillow, prices of homes in Richmond rose an astounding fifteen percent in twenty Two multifamily housing projects were completed in twenty twenty-one, Noma Market Rate condominiums and the terraces at Nevin, an affordable rent project. The unit count shown above does not include over six thousand fully entitled units at Point Malati, Campus Bay, and Terminal One. Richmond has more affordable housing than any other city in Contra Costa County. We have twenty-seven affordable developments with almost four thousand units total, twenty percent for families earning less than fifty percent of AMI, and forty percent for families earning less than sixty percent of AMI. Richmond is short one thousand three hundred and thirty-three units in meeting our Regional Housing Needs Assessment goals. We have thousands of units approved and entitled, but nervous developers are putting them all Accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are a great way of providing affordable housing, and the number of permits that Richmond is issuing continues to go up every year. We have very few new market rate projects, but one of them is Cherry Blossom Row. It's in the Richmond Annex, and it's the most recently entitled project in Richmond. Hang on a minute, I lost my... I lost my place, but I'll get it back here. Okay, let's go to the next slide. The terraces at Nevin takes up two entire city blocks and is a one hundred percent affordable project currently leased up. Noma, which means north of Marina, is completely sold out. Point Malati is among the most contentious issues facing the city council. Despite the city prevailing on both lawsuits challenging the project, with one currently on appeal, the city council majority continues to oppose development and look for ways to stop it. The sale to SunCal must be completed by May twenty-first, which is less than ninety days from now, or upstream, and the Guidaville tribe can purchase Point Malati for four hundred Like Point Malati, the Campus Bay Mixed Use Project continues to be opposed by the city council majority. The project is fully entitled, and the developers met all requirements and deadlines. The California Environmental Quality Act lawsuit has not yet made it to court. With the exception of warehouse and distribution centers, development has pretty much stalled out in Richmond over the last couple of years. Some blame COVID, some blame rent control, some blame the anti-development, anti-business policies of the city council, probably a little bit of each. Before COVID, Richmond unemployment was approaching two percent. After a COVID-driven spike, it has settled in at a little over five percent. However, help-oriented ads are all over. We seem to be experiencing the recent phenomenon of job seekers turning down low-wage, uninspiring jobs with little opportunity for advancement. Richmond Works secured two new grants totaling one point two million dollars to serve West Contra Costa County laid-off workers impacted by COVID nineteen and English language learners. Career services were provided over six thousand individuals by appointment, and virtually walk-in clients were also welcome. Thanks to a transfer of funds from the police and some successful grant applications, the youth jobs program has taken off. We secured three new grants totaling two point three million to provide employment opportunities and work-based learning for Richmond youth and West County youth with disabilities, and an additional grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to serve laid-off youth workers ages eighteen to twenty-four impacted by COVID. In twenty twenty-one, three hundred and thirteen Richmond youth ages sixteen to twenty-four, including forty-six disabled youth ages sixteen to twenty-one, were placed in more than eighty work sites that provided an opportunity to enhance their work experiences. Richmond Build and Youth Build continue to be Richmond's success stories by placing residents in good-paying jobs. Marty Walsh, the Secretary of Labor, visited Richmond in twenty twenty-one to recognize the program's success. The Hurlbut Foundation continues to support Richmond youth. Thanks, Marin and Gary. Due to recent massive projects, the available warehousing space has soared, creating rising vacancies, but they won't last long. Prices are also on the rise. The manufacturing market is stable, both in inventory and pricing. We need new businesses to pick up the slack. Richmond has never been a robust office market, but what inventory we have is stagnating, probably caused by COVID-related work-at-home trend. Transitioning unused and underused commercial buildings to housing is a mayor's office initiative. I might note that in the city of San Pablo, they just... I might note that in the city of San Pablo, they just changed an entire office building into housing. After years of struggle, Hilltop Mall is mostly deserted. The city was awarded a grant for a special area plan to decide what the future holds, likely a mix of logistics, housing, and commercial. The Richmond Promise has now been around for over five years, welcoming its sixth cohort consisting of 415 scholars, 68% of whom are first-generation college students and 60% of which are eligible for federal Pell Grants. The promise could not succeed without its college-success partners, Contra Costa College, Berkeley City College, Beyond 12, and more. One big highlight from last year was a $300,000 grant from the Kresge Foundation to scale essential wraparound support systems for students. Heads up, the 2022 scholarship application is now open and due March 14th. In order to ensure college success, the Richmond Promise relies on near-peer college ambassadors who are current scholars that connect with high school seniors and provide guidance and assistance throughout the scholarship process. Last year, 10 scholars were hired for the academic year and 12 associates were hired for the summer. Ambassadors and staff hosted 12 workshops and presentations and provide over 200 hours of one-on-one appointments. Over 600 seniors participated in college preparedness and affordability programming and 99% successfully completed their FAFSA and Dream Act applications. As for career access and preparation, there were 35 mentorship initiatives pairings and six campus network liaisons, and a new student advisory board was found. And I'll just add that one of the best things about the Richmond Promise program is not the money, it's the effort that goes into preparing students for college and getting them excited about going. So creating a college-going culture is a real success of it. The money is just one of the ways of getting there. The Department of Children and Youth was created by a 2018 ballot measure intended to funnel revenue from real estate transfer taxes into programs for young people. Last year, 1.62 million was awarded to 20 youth-serving organizations covering six priority areas that range from behavioral and mental health to access to basic needs. The request for proposals for fiscal year 2223 has been released and $1.8 million in grants will be available this year. In-person visits have resumed for the Richmond Public Libraries at all three branches, Main, Bayview, and West Side. The library received $470,000 in grants last year and held various events and programs, including free summer lunch sites, self-guided online learning courses, and the Literacy for Every Adult program, a free program that helps adults develop the skills and confidence they need to achieve their individual goals. COVID brought on dramatic changes in how we get around as public transportation ridership tanked due to both fears of infection and the work-from-home pattern. Freeway traffic is back to pre-pandemic levels while public transportation may never fully recover. BART remains the slowest to recover while ferries have the highest recovery rate and the Richmond Ferry has the highest recovery rate of all ferry routes. AC Transit is offering many new services to lure riders back. Check it out. BART has also upgraded services, including making it cleaner and safer than ever. WIDA has joined other transit agencies and offering improved services, and it's really working for the Richmond route. Bike Share came to Richmond in 2021 and an on-demand EV shuttle debuts next month. Richmond's portion of the Bay Trail continues to grow and improve. Richmond has the highest percentage of Bay Trail complete of any city on the Bay thanks to Trails for Richmond Action Committee Track for its effective advocacy. Connecting the ferry, the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, the Bay Trail, and the Richmond Greenway was once just a vision, but it's now happening. With some infrastructure that dates back over 100 years, Richmond's wastewater collection and treatment system needs constant maintenance and upgrading. The condition of our streets continues to be a focus of concern by residents, and the Public Works Department is continuously upgrading our street system. A major streets program is the Castro Ranch Road Improvement Project. With COVID on the wane, people with two years of pent-up energy are looking for ways to get out and do things again. The Rosie the River Revister Center has reopened, as has the Assemble Restaurant at the Crane Way next door. The Red Oak Victory is back in business, hosting visitation and events. The Richmond Museum reopens in March with a new executive director. After a two-year hiatus due to COVID and a broken submarine cable, East Brother Light Station and its popular California Victorian Lighthouse Dinner, Bed, and Breakfast Inn is back in business and has been since September of last year. So far during fiscal year 2122, there have been over 200 hours of service, over 100 bags of trash picked up, over 100 volunteers, and four cleanups hosted by Richmond Love Your Block. $80,000 in blight abatement grants were also awarded. A heartwarming spotlight is Eagle... Jay Yagoda, who used his Love Your Block funding to continue stocking his little free library. Thanks to the success of the Community Services Department and Richmond Love Your Block COVID-19 MiniGrants Program, nine projects were awarded over $4,000. Over 300 volunteers participated in over 2,000 hours of service that benefited over 10,000 residents. The Tool Lending Library remains popular as stay-at-home COVID refugees take on home improvement projects at a higher rate than ever. Richmond hit the jackpot on Parks Grants with over $9 million for two parks. This one is in Shields Reed. The other Parks Grant was for Dirt World, the popular BMX course on the Richmond Greenway. Recreation programs for all ages are ramping back up. Swimming pools and recreation centers are opening back up. The environmental and community investment grants funded by Chevron as a part of their refinery modernization project continue to improve the quality of life in Richmond. Anyone, including young people, can improve the quality of life in Richmond by serving on a board, a commission, or a committee. Right now, there are over 60 empty seats looking for committed residents to fill them. So here are my top 10 wishes for 2022. The end of COVID-19 as we know it. The end of dissension and bickering among city council members. The lowest homicide rate in history. Alas, it will not be zero. Successful advancement of Point Malati and Campus Bay. Stabilization of city leadership. Significant progress in ending homelessness. Reinvigoration of economic development. A 2022 election resulting in a more collegial city council. The cleanest city ever. A stable, long-term financial plan. This year, as I said before, will be my last year in office after 27 years of service, eight of which I had the honor to serve as your mayor. I now hold the record of the most consecutive years served in Richmond history. So with that, I wish us all to have a great year, and I'll see you next week. So are there any questions or comments from council members?
I didn't know you can draw.
Say what?
I didn't know you can draw.
So are there any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one speaker. I'll take Jenny Garcia. You have two minutes to speak. You can go ahead and start.
Hello, good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Jenny Garcia. Thank you, Mayor, for this update. I just want to say I want to keep you focused on your top wish list for 2022. I think number two is very important. I think we all can agree with number one, but the number two, end of dissension and bickering among city council members. I also feel it's important that you, as our mayor, can set an example as a leader. And I just want to remind you, a long time ago when you were running for mayor for the first time, I actually canvassed and supported you and our Latino community to vote for you because I really believe that you brought a lot to the table, and I still do. I would hate for you to leave as mayor this year and leave the legacy that you're leaving behind as it has already been shown, which is why I think number two, you should have added yourself on this because you still have some months left, and I still believe in the work, in the wonderful work you've done for the city of Richmond. But I still believe that you could still finish up your year strong, your last year as mayor. I don't want to see it wasted as the mayor that a lot of folks think you are or you have shown to be because I still believe in the work that you've done for the city of Richmond, and I am sure that you can make these last months be more pleasurable for your coworkers and for your city. You're still going to live in our city, and I still want to be able to work with you. And to be able to do that, you really have to think about what... Be accountable for your actions and not just for everyone else's. So I want to just let you know that I respect the work that you've done in the city of Richmond for the longest. I still believe that you bring many wonderful things to the table, and I would hate to see you waste your career as a mayor, leaving the legacy that you're leaving.
I'm exhausted. Thank you. And there are no more public speakers.
Councilor Bass, you got a hand up?
Yes, having served with you for many of the years that you've been on the council, I just want to thank you for your leadership. I also want to thank you for the diversity of your staff. You continuously had staff that represented fully the city of Richmond. And of course, your latest appointment of Mr. Whitmore as the Chief of Staff was, I thought, a very excellent choice. So I wish you continued success, and I intend to continue to work with you for the betterment of this city. So congratulations on your final year. And again, I wish you the very best and success. And let's do try to work together more as a team and for the benefit of the citizenry, not so much for ourselves. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other public speakers?
No, there are none. No more.
Okay. I think that brings the end of our agenda, except for reports of officers. You want to read that item?
Yes. Item Q is reports of officers who refer us to staff and general reports, including AB 1234 reports.
Anybody have a report?
I have one.
Councilor Willis.
Yeah. I did attend the League of Women Voters League Day for a short time as they're talking about solving for housing as well. So for all of us interested and wanting to collaborate with other groups who care about housing and solving the housing crisis, you know, Legal Women Voters is well-known, and I would suggest people plug in with them on that issue.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I believe we're done. Anybody have any memorials this time? Don't see any. Okay, well, everyone have a nice evening. We got out early tonight. I hope that's a trend.
Good night.
All right, good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.